Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Two announcements to make for you before we begin. First, an application has been postponed. That's Michael Jones, TR, Vicky Johnson, TR, Nilly LLC Network Development Company for a final subdivision at Zero Sunshine Avenue and Zero Florence Road. Second is that both Mr. Levy and Mr. Yeski are absent or will not be seated for this meeting. Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Wells will be seated for them. In addition, Mr. Barilak will be seated. No, and in addition, Mr. Lowe, if we get him into the meeting, will be taken back, will be reseating on Nine Glenville Street. And with that, we will begin, and Peter will join us. This is a non-voting item, so it's fine if he's late for it. Our first item is a discussion item, the Greenwich Central Middle School Building Committee with a pre-application review for their proposal to construct a new middle school at Nine Indian Rock Lane in the R-12 Zone. Madam Kilgallen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Alvin, members of the commission and Mr. LaRoe. For the record, my name is Claire Kilgallen, and I am the Vice Chair of the Central Middle School Building Committee. Our Chair, Tony Turner, is out of the country and sends his regrets. Our committee was formed 53 weeks ago to fulfill the educational specifications set by the Board of Education for a new CMS. In April, the Board of Education directed and authorized our committee to start the MI process, and the Board of Selectmen referred the project to this commission in June. The committee, some of members are on right now, you'll see them as attendees, is a cross-functional team taking a holistic approach to the project's changes and improvements to the campus and adjacent areas. Our building committee has Michael Kizalak, a DPW civil engineer, on the team to help coordinate with the town. The use of the new building and property will change in appearance but will remain unchanged in function and content. There will be no intensification of use. Campus safety is a top priority, and the committee appreciates traffic concerns surrounding CMS. Addressing them has been a priority matter for this committee. The project supports site improvements involving post-Sandy Hook comprehensive state school safety infrastructure standards for school construction and significant improvements to traffic flows on and off campus. And as a background for the commission and viewers, the building committee work includes an important community engagement element. All the committee meetings are open to the public in hybrid format via Zoom teleconference, and we've had almost 100 meetings with 64 full building committee meetings plus design review and communications meetings. In addition, we have held two perimeter neighbor meetings. Most recently last week, we've also engaged in greater outreach to the surrounding neighborhood, holding a series of community engagement forums, three to date, with the last one July 12th. Our forums have been heavily publicized through the media and school channels, and the nearly 200 Q and A from the events are on our webpage. We have a public-facing email for community input and welcome that, and we have a content-rich website with videos, informational documents, agendas, minutes, et cetera, and our vanity website is greenichschools.org/cmsbc. And that's it for me. I will turn it over to our very capable professional team for the design information. The architectural firm is the SLAM Collaborative, who we engaged this January, and the lead presenter is Kemp Morehart, who will introduce the other team members as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Good afternoon, Chairman Alvin and the rest of the commissioners and Mr. LaRoe. My name is Kemp Morehart. I'm an architect with the SLAM Collaborative. With me today are a few members of our team. Amy Samuelson is our project manager, Jim Hoagland, our lead designer, Henry Withers, our landscape architect, and Andrew White is our civil engineer with Ty and Bond. I'm going to share my screen to share with you a few graphics to help facilitate the discussion. Hopefully, I can do that.
It should be all set, Kemp.
Sure, there we go. Okay. Can everybody see the screen? So Patrick, I will get you copies of these graphics just so you have them for record.
Thank you.
But I think most of them you have already, but we will send this after the meeting is over. So hopefully you can see the existing site plan. I thought that would be a good place to start of where we're started, where we have started our design effort. Our team was challenged with designing a new middle school for 660 students on the existing site while the existing school remains operational. So to do that, we started looking at options early back in January on how we might achieve that goal. In addition to the building, we have parking requirements, additional fields that need to be placed on site, specifically a baseball field, a softball field, and a general-purpose rectangular playfield. At the time when we first started, the Edspec from the Board of Ed had a requirement of 250 parking spaces that has since been relaxed, and we are now working more toward 120 to 122, I believe is where we are today. So as you can imagine, that's a lot of program to fit on a site that has very little open space to it currently, and quite a few trees and tree cover with some topography to deal with as well. And in addition to that, we also understand that, and also, we want to preserve as many trees as possible. We are looking to kind of integrate this design into this natural landscape that we have to work with as much as we possibly can within the parameters. As Claire mentioned, there are existing traffic issues surrounding the site, lots of congestion on Indian Rock Lane. There are some there's a lot of backing up of parents dropping off students and so forth, as well as buses, all happening off of Indian Rock Lane based on the two existing parking lot and turnaround lanes here. This one brought to the east being primary parent drop, and the one immediately adjacent to the school being the bus drop with some parking around the west side of the school. So all of those issues were on our list for resolution with our new design. So this is a slightly updated version of our site plan from what was submitted in the pre-application. You can see it's got the schematic design stamp on it. This is a site plan that we presented to the community last week during the latest community meeting, and I thought it was a good graphic because it has some notes on the side that highlight some of the key aspects of the site plan. But I'm going to start with the basics of the overall site where we have preserved the easternmost entrance point to the site off of Indian Rock Lane. It may be slightly adjusted in its position, and also have preserved a portion of that existing turnaround for the parents. And that was done for a few reasons. First and foremost, to reduce the amount of regrading and reengineering of the site, to utilize that existing parking as much as we possibly could, which also had the side effect of preserving trees within that existing island. And as you can see, we've designed an entry drive with parking on either side that bends around the existing building. You can just make out, I'll zoom in a little bit. You can make out there is an overlap with the existing building. So as we design and construct this project, we will have to complete this portion of the entry drive once this building is down. But as I mentioned, the objective is to be able to have this be a fully operational school while, before that we take down the existing, and so the students will then move in, and then the existing building will be taken down, and this will be completed. So we wanted to be able to bend around that. One of the ways we were able to address the queuing that's occurring on Indian Rock Lane is to provide a significant queuing lane for parent drop-off onsite in the entrance and approach drive. And as you come up to the main entrance, we then have a formal drop-off zone that will accommodate eight to 10 cars at a time, and then they can, as they drop off, they peel around and then exit the site. In addition to that, all surrounding student safety and safe site operations for a school, we have designed a separate bus loop that is completely separated from that parent drop-off loop, and that is accessed with a right turn only in from Orchard Street, just south of Coach Lamb playing, with a right turn in one-way bus lane that would come in, and that has the capacity to stack eight buses, which is the demand for the buses for the school, and then loop out with a, again, with a one-way bus loop and a right out only onto Orchard. In addition to that bus loop, there is some staff parking in this area to assist us in getting to the parking count. One thing I should have mentioned when I was on the existing site plan, let me go back to that. You can see this purple line around the perimeter of the site. That was something that we established early on in the design process to establish essentially the trunk line edge of the existing tree coverage on the site.
Okay. Do you, how do you want to do this? Can we stop and talk about the circulation now? And have the commissioners just ask you questions?
Sure, however you'd like to do it.
Commissioners, would you like to hear the whole thing first, or do you want to ask questions about the circulation?
I'd like to hear the whole thing first.
I agree.
Okay, all right. Go for it then, sir.
Okay, thank you. That pink line is important because it's serving as a reference line for us and and the committee as we designed options through our schematic design process. And you can also see a pink line around what we call the rock outcropping right on Indian Rock Lane, and that's, that reference point will show up, reference lines will show up on all of our site layouts to give you a point of reference on how much tree clearing is being proposed for the building and/or the fields in this case. So I should have mentioned that earlier. I forgot to do so. So as you see, we have a separate bus lane, and off of that bus lane, we do have a service lane, and this is primarily for custodial deliveries and mechanical servicing. And then on the opposite side of the building that is coming off of the the parent drop-off, there is a fire lane that goes around the entire building, and we're utilizing a part of that fire lane for kitchen service access on this side of the the building where we have our kitchen and cafeteria in this portion of the building. We also have a paved play area for basketball, four-square, and other paved hardscape-type games. And then we have the full-size baseball field, 300-foot outfield, a rectangular playfield that does overlap that outfield, and then a softball field in the corner of Stanwich and Indian Rock. We have, and Henry can speak to this in more detail if you have questions on it, but we have done our an initial pass at the landscape requirements for screening, and you'll see representative graphics for plantings to help offset some of the tree clearing that we've made during the design. We've also tried to minimize the clearing up here at the new entrance. You can see that there was actually a natural break in that tree edge that we were able to utilize to create that entrance point. But the primary area of clearing is along the back edge where this building is being built into the slope. The main entrance is all at grade, and everything is accessible on the site as far as ADA is concerned, and so our primary community spaces, auditorium, cafeteria, gymnasium, as well as certain programmatic functional spaces for the school are on the main level. And then as you are in the building, you go up, set of stairs, and there is an elevator as well to the second floor, which is approximately traced out like this, where we have three classroom pods, one for each grade level. That is at the second floor level, but does exit to grade at these notches between those three pods. So we do have exiting to grade on the backside, and so that, in that way, the building is built into the slope. The existing tennis courts are planned to remain in their existing location with minimal improvements. We do have some other safety improvements that we're proposing to increase pedestrian safety coming to the site. You'll see the north portion of the site, we have a proposed crosswalk and a small leg of sidewalk going to the Coach Lamb Road to assist students that are coming from Coach Lamb to get across safely to the school and get up to the school. In addition to that, to avoid additional tree clearing that we would need to do if we didn't have a stop sign here, we are proposing a stop sign with another crosswalk on Orchard in the area of the bus exiting lane. Should we not have that stop sign, we would have to do some significant clearing to get the appropriate sightlines or an intersection at that location. And then finally, we are talking about some pedestrian crosswalk improvements on Indian Rock in the area of Pomerance, excuse me, not Pomerance, Fond du Rosa Drive, right? And that is being proposed as a a speed table where you have a a ramp up to a flat zone where the pedestrians would cross and then a ramp back down, and it's kind of a structured speed control device, which we feel would be a strong improvement for Indian Rock to help slow down the traffic on that road and increase pedestrian safety. In addition to that, at the exit point, we are proposing a two-lane exit drive with a dedicated right hand and dedicated left hand, so to help alleviate the congestion that may occur on the exiting sequence. And I believe that sums up my presentation. We can open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Who would like to lead off?
Mr. Morehart, real quick question about the southern bus exit. You indicated that it's right-hand out only?
Correct. That's what our current plan is, to have it be a one-way bus loop with a right hand in and a right hand out.
Okay. Why is it a right-hand out only? Could a bus actually make the turn to go left and north on Orchard?
I believe it could. I think the turning movement is available. I believe, and I may ask Andrew to chime in on this a bit. I believe we were talking about right turn only at one point prior to putting in a stop sign. So if we have a stop sign there, perhaps it could be in both directions.
That is correct, Kemp. So the original plan before the stop sign was proposed was to have the right turn exit only due to sight lines and clearances. And so it is not a question of the geometry and whether a bus could go north and having a bus limited to only going south. So this is part of the iterative design process where we return to then stop.
A question for you. The you discussed the parent entrance and the bus entrance. What happens with staff and volunteers?
So a portion of staff would utilize this parking area with 22 spaces that are, that's off of the bus lane, and that would be, that's planned because those staff are going to be there before the arrival of students, so they can get their cars in and not be disruptive to the bus lane activity. And then the balance of staff would park anywhere along this parking area. There will be some designated spaces for visitors near the building, near the end of the building, and so that would service any visitors coming in.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just a question on ingress and egress. Do you see a situation where, you know, you've got parking, you've got two-way traffic, and you've got parking on both sides? Is the roadway there going to be wide enough to accommodate if someone's, you know, trying to pull out and exit the property during, you know, when most people arrive or when they're leaving, or are they just going to have to wait? You know, right up along there, if someone's trying to pull out, and, you know, people are queuing, are they going to be stuck there until it's over?
If there's a long queue line behind a space where so many may look to be coming out, they would have to either wait for that queue line to quell, or, you know, most of these spaces are going to be parked with staff that are going to be there in advance of the student drop-off, and so we don't expect a lot of conflict there. But the road is a full 24-foot-wide entrance drive, so it is a full-width road width drive, and it can certainly accommodate those turning movements.
Okay, and then several question on parking. Sure you're aware of the requirement for schools that receive state funding to have 20% of the parking spaces allocated with to, or having AV chargers?
Yes, that's part of our plan.
Okay. And then lastly, I missed it on Orchard. Are you going to have two stop signs? Where the bus comes in, the bus goes out, or just one at the egress?
The plan is to have one on either direction because we have a crosswalk
Right.
hatched area planned to allow for students to come across from Orchard Street to the site.
And how about where the bus is coming in, you've got a crosswalk up there, don't you?
Correct, yes.
So how are we protecting the students, the walkers there?
I think that still needs to be determined. My expectation is we would have a signal, like a press button, to be able to cross the walk, and it would be a warning signal, because part of the reason for this proposed crosswalk is the speeds, first of all, on Orchard are are in excess of the posted speed limit, at least from the traffic study, and there are limited sight distances because it's a horizontal and vertical curve coming around here. So I think we would need to have some form of warning indication that there's a crosswalk ahead. I don't know, Andrew, if you want to add to that discussion?
Absolutely. So with any crosswalk, that would be, would consider a mid-block crossing where you wouldn't be at a controlled intersection. There is advanced warning that will follow the MUCD standards for signage and the state standards for signage. One thing that could be considered that we've just started looking at is the rapid, the RRFBs, the Rapid Repeating Flashing Beacons. Those are the horizontal yellow lights that alternate and flash in the direction of traffic when pushed and activated at the crosswalk. Those are being implemented more and more throughout the state, particularly in situations that are not controlled by an intersection.
I believe some of you were also listening yesterday. The state law, which allows enforcement of the speed limit via camera, automatic enforcement, was signed by the governor on June 23rd, and Patrick LaRoe, our town planner, is going to be exploring with Greenwich Police and also DPW whether it would be possible for, because the municipality has to decide to implement such a program, whether we could pilot it at Central Middle because of the high speeds at this school. Don't, obviously don't have the answer. This came up only in the preliminary, and Patrick has to reach out and see what kind of reception he gets, but he's got a copy of, he's got the statute, and he's going to be looking at that because that, this isn't, to me, this is an ideal situation for that, where you have to clock someone going in excess of 10, it has to be in excess of 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. And from the traffic report, it seems that we have that well in hand, but even with passage of the bill, there was some resistance because of Connecticut has always resisted camera enforcement, so I don't know which way it'll go with the town, but Patrick, as our town planner, is asking the question. There, as long as I'm talking, Mary, I know you had your hand up. I just had one more, one more comment for you, a question. The input we've gotten from the public has expressed a concern about the single entrance for parents. Could you comment a little bit on that decision? We've got some emails from the public that express a concern about that.
You're asking me to comment on a single?
Yes, sir. And how the decision was reached, and I assume you think it's safer, why you think it's safer, but that's the question that people are asking.
Sure. Typically, in school site design, we like to separate the two vehicular patterns, the parent drop-off pattern and the bus pattern, and so
And why is that, sir?
That is to just to separate that traffic, so you avoid the conflicts of bus movements with car movements and the congestion that you're experiencing today at the school where cars are intercommingled with buses and so forth, and it's all based on student safety.
So there's a higher likelihood for a student to be injured, for example, with commingled traffic is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead. So you separated it now, and because you're separating it, you didn't want to have a second curb cut for the parents?
Correct. It actually would probably cause some confusion if we had multiple curb cuts for parents. And I think the way we have it designed here, it's very simple. There's one way in, you come in, you do what you have come in to do to drop off, and then there's one way out.
Mary, you were next. Your hand went up and down, but I think you had some questions.
Actually, I think Mr. White answered the question because I was concerned about the traffic speed on Orchard, and the RFB would be a good way, I think. That's what I was going to suggest. I've read my mind already.
Okeydoke. Mr. McRae, you're next.
Just, I wanted to know how many cars are in the queue again? From the lower level all the way up to the circle?
Henry, do you have that number? I believe it's in the neighborhood of 40 cars that can queue before the formal drop-off zone.
That's about right, Kemp. And, you know, in addition, just as a general guide, you know, on the number of times we've watched it in person, that is the parent entrance currently, and that's the exact same location, and the cars are queued coming down Indian Rock Lane to about mid-court for that first set of tennis courts, you know, the most extreme of the queuing. No, I meant in terms of wrapping around, Kemp, around into Orchard. They actually come down Orchard to about the middle of the tenant, first set of tennis courts, and then they queue around there. That causes a lot of frustration. People are pulled off the side, and then you got two lanes of people trying to pass back and forth. In any case, we believe that the queuing lane we provided is almost double that today, so that would take a lot of the pressure off of Indian Rock Lane, and then that, in addition to the speed table we're proposing where the children cross from Fond du Rosa and the neighborhood to the south of that would really significantly make a difference in the speed and the safety for kids crossing and walking to school in those areas.
Yeah, I have a correction on the number of queued cars. It's actually 60. Thank you to Amy for sending me that information.
And just a correction to the buses. We actually, in the updated schematic, Kemp, we do have nine buses that can queue up and discharge for students in that area. So, and that's the current amount of buses that serve the site, and, you know, we've spoken with Tom and others there, and I think they're comfortable with what we show is the ability to get students back into the building without any conflicts. And just to reiterate what Kemp was saying a little bit earlier, the state SCGR requires really that we keep cars, passenger cars and buses separate, if, you know, if at all possible, and
Got it.
illegal to discharge, to pass a bus that's discharging students, so that would really cause a conflict if, you know, if they have to wait until all the buses are done discharging, you really can't legally pass a bus discharging there. You really can't legally pass a bus that's letting kids on or off.
Thanks, Henry.
You all have a lot of experience in this, so as parents are in this queue and they're coming in, and they decide, a parent decides that the child is gonna be closer to on time. If the child jumps out of the car and runs to the building, and then the parent makes a U-turn in this very long queue, how would that be handled?
I think that would have to be handled administratively by school administration to help mon, to help monitor that and marshal that.
Because that has been an occurrence. I'm not making it up, though. That is something that happens in these queues, and this is a long queue.
No, you're not. And, and in fact, they park at the Christian School above and have kids walk down the hill and cross without, not, and not being at the crosswalk, so we're hoping that this solves about ninety percent of the problems, but there's always those kinds of issues. I've literally watched cars drive around, a principal standing in the middle of a road, drive up around, over curve, not at this school, but at another school we work. And so parents do get very anxious about getting their kids there on time.
It's more than just even parent. I, I watched a car after a baseball game in a park near my house do a U-turn by driving clear across the park. So it, it is just something that's happened to people. Okay, so you're assuming that somehow the school can keep everybody in this queue. Now, staff is arriving and they're parking here. And the parents are queued along this. And to Mr. Wells's question, there's gonna be enough room. If a parent does, that there, that there is, that they can have the two-way traffic and folks coming into park to go to work?
Well, you know, it is, as Kemp pointed out, it is a full twenty-four foot aisle. We could look at making it twenty-six. I don't wanna
No, I'm just asking you. I'm asking you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'm not asking you to change it. I'm asking you all the what-ifs because Patrick, refresh my memory. We had to rebuild the North Myanna circulation. That's the one Patrick knows the most intimately because we had a terrible time with it afterwards. We had to rebuild, we had to redo the Ham Av circulation because we had a terrible time. And we had to change the North Street one as well. So we've had three schools, and honestly, and, and that's just the Publix. Greenwich Country Day also had a problem with their drop off and pickup lines. I don't know if I've left anyone out, but I know that Sacred Heart is incredibly disciplined about this. And they basically get out and soldier people into place. But I don't know if the BOE has that kind of staff, so just as you consider the things that could go wrong, this is an important question, and this is one of the biggest concerns the commission's gonna have because it affects child safety. So if all the research backs what you're proposing and you've considered the what-ifs, that's really all we're saying. I'm saying anyway.
I think it's important to note that there is ample width when, when cars are pulled up against the sidewalk here to, to let their students off. There's ample width for just simply turning around. So personally, I wouldn't see a need to do a K-turn, for example, and drop my student off earlier. I would just simply walk or drive through. And then additionally, there's a sidewalk that runs all the way along the entrance drive.
Have you, I assume that the BOE knows what happens at all of the campuses, right? And they have commented on this, and they know where, what parents do, right?
We have had these discussions, absolutely.
All right, that's, that was our key question. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Low, then Mr. Wells, and then Patrick, who is probably gonna remind me. Patrick, should I let, Patrick, did you wanna talk about where we've had circulation issues?
Well, yeah, so you, I, I don't know if you mentioned it, Madam Chair, but high school is obviously the other one that is
Oh, yeah, I did mention the high school. You're totally right, and of course, it's a huge problem.
Yeah, I, I would say from experience and just, I think it's successful at New Lab is queuing into the site and then have the ability to get out if you drop your kid off at the, your child off at the end of the circle, or, you know, wherever, wherever that is, is, is successful. So I, I believe that this plan has that space, so when you're in the circle, you're able to, if you're the fourth car in the circle on the curb there, you're able to disembark and then you're, and then get around. Out, and that, and that, it does help, and, and I think it does reduce the impetus for parents to do U-turns like you had mentioned, Madam Chair, so I just, I'm, that's anecdotal, but I just like that.
Mr., oh, go, sorry, sorry.
If I could just ask one question. Current, well, with future application, I think it'd be helpful if we could get quantitative numbers about queuing now versus queuing in the proposed.
Great, thank you.
Sixty, but I think people don't recognize how little queuing on-site is on the current campus. So I think that would be helpful. And then I, I just have one question. Drop off now, there's the east driveway and the west driveway. Are, are parents going to both or just to the east driveway under the current?
They, they can only go into the area that Kemp is showing, and that whole area, it's, it's a little blurry from the aerial, but that whole area is actually parking, substantial amount of parking. So the entire parent drop off now is, is primarily parked, and so to the concern about somebody trying to get in and out and, and park that, that really is a tough situation. It's probably why a lot of the parents don't pull in at all, but instead drop off at Indian Rock. The bus drop off is currently, there are, the buses are queued up there, so there's really not a place for cars to park in that area, and anybody that does violate that, there are some monitors that keep them out of that area, so that really is for buses only. And then the staff park to the, to the north and to the west over there on that other lot that you see going back around to the playground and the service area.
Yeah, I, I think anecdotally, there, we've heard that the belief is that parents from the west use the west driveway and from the east use the east, but I, that was not my understanding, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and I've watched it three or so times, and I haven't seen parents come in there, and occasionally they'll come in, but they park in that parking area to the west.
Okay.
Okay. Peter Low and then Arn Wells.
My, my apologies if I missed it, but do we know the incidence of volume of pedestrian or student traffic crossing Orchard today? And, and what is the expected volume with two new curb cuts on Orchard?
I don't have that information.
I don't think we have that information as far as the student volume across Orchard. We'd have to get back to him that.
Okay, and then, you know, along with that, I would say, aside from the proposed stop signs, are there other pedestrian safety steps anticipated? Related question.
Yes, we talked about some pedestrian improvements across Indian Rock, and what we are currently thinking about is a a speed table that would ramp up to to allow for a larger flat zone for pedestrian crossing and also have the, the double effect of reducing speed on Indian Rock.
Okay, and, and again,
Still has to be reviewed with DPW.
Who, I'm referring to Orchard in particular.
So just, just as a reference point, the, the three residences on Orchard, we've spoken with staff at the school, and they are required to provide busing for those students because there is no safe accessible route to the school currently, even though they're one second away from walking across the street, but it's not a safe condition, so they are on the bus route. And I believe that quite a few of the students on Orchard are as well, because again, there's really not a safe passage currently today, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, it looks like the big challenge is the, the sixty cars queuing or the amount of cars queuing, and I just wonder for those students that can't walk, because obviously you're encouraging students to walk with improving the sidewalks, but are you aware of what, what other schools have done to encourage those students to take the bus and thereby, you know, reduce the amount of cars that need to queue? Is there anything that the school could do to encourage that? From your experience?
That's really a
Board of Ed question.
Board of Ed question, or parent question, yeah.
It's a Board of Ed, and then working with the P T A. Who was saying something?
That would be Madam Chair. Arn, so around middle schools, the, the, the no bus circle is, is a mile and a half. It's two miles from the high school and it's a mile from the elementary school. So the policy of the busing program at the Board of Ed is to not bus children within that distance.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm also thinking that, that some parents, for whatever reason, you know, were gonna bring their kids to school by car, and, you know, if you can change some of the policies and make it more convenient for them, more kids on the buses, less traffic, and probably a safer situation. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. I'm not seeing any hands from the commission. Anybody else have comments and questions? Right.
I have, I have a few questions for the commission, in fact.
Yes, in fact, I was gonna answer, start answering those, but why don't you go ahead and, and you run it?
Sure, thank you. So, you know, in summary, I think, given all of the design parameters that we needed to address with the design and the other constraints on the site to keep an operational school during construction and so forth, I, I feel that the, the design team has developed a very successful design that addresses all those things and addresses the, the current pain points, if you will, with your current existence at Central Middle School. I think it's a vast improvement and a vast improvement in safety, specifically with the separation of bus and, and parent drop. We do have, we do have a question of, do you, first of all, do you agree with the this public safety improvements that we have planned for the site and and are there any other improvements you think?
We, we answered that, we, we partly answered that, that we'd like to explore taking advantage of this new state law. That would be up to the municipality. And we'd like to explore that, and Patrick, as the town planner, is going to be working with the town departments to see if there's any traction on that idea. But if you could camera reinforce speeding, you would increase the safety on Orchard significantly. There's also the ability to reduce the speed limit further in school zones than it is at present. That's another option. Those are the two things I can think of on the municipal side. But the things you're considering, the commission is saying, I'm hearing agreement. You've gotta slow down the traffic on Orchard. Whatever, whatever we do. I don't know how you make the crosswalk safe enough. But of course, and, and we try not to do the look back of, hey, it hasn't been safe in the past. It's what we can, we do going forward. What else, sir? And does anybody else wanna add to that?
I think the, the stop signs on Orchard are, would be critical. I think actually, putting it a raised crosswalk. Yeah, that'll, that'll stop everybody from speeding.
Agreed. Although I've seen things that belie that, but agreed, those are great ideas. Anybody else? Okay, next question.
With regard to parking, we've increased the parking count from ninety-eight in the existing condition to a hundred twenty-two for the proposed condition. And, you know, in, in conversing with Mr. LaRoe during design, we, you know, we've understood that we don't need to necessarily design the parking count to accommodate the worst-case scenario. For example, you know, a full auditorium of five hundred and forty is just not in the cards. So we understand that for those peaks, there would be a parking arrangement made with either neighboring parcels that have additional parking capacity and so forth. And we wanted to just verify with you that 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 approach is first of all acceptable and, and supported by the commission. We do have an opportunity to accommodate up to another thirty cars in the bus lane for special events, so that would then bring the full car count capacity to about a hundred and fifty in a special event such as an open house or something like that. And so that's, that's the first point I wanted to make, and is want to understand if the commission is supporting that, and if they feel that that parking count is sufficient.
I'm gonna let Mr. LaRoe do the color commentary first.
I, I think that has been, that's been typical of the commission's evaluation on these type of projects. I would also add, I think it's very helpful to have a classic schedule of events that, that the middle school has had over the five, ten years that would show when those excessive, you know, demand days are, so that we, we, the commission has a, a general idea of how frequent you know, there is the, the use of the auditorium, there's, there's, you know, how many back-to-school night-type events are there, where there's, there's, you know, graduation or moving up ceremonies, what have you. So if we could, we could have those from, it's probably gonna be the principal that will provide it, but that kind of scheduling, I think that really helps to address or confirm the findings that the parking is adequate for, you know, the ninety percent of the days kind of thing.
Anybody else wanna comment now? Okay, I would just add that the other, that what you are balancing is the heightened concern about impervious surfaces and flooding in town. And by having less parking, you reduce the impervious, and that the commission believes that that's important at present. We discussed yesterday regarding another application, that there's been significant flooding along the Connecticut River just from the recent storms. And there's been destruction of crops, for example. Just saying, we are seeing a lot of these flood events, so we would like to see you optimize how much impervious you add. That means that we support you being consistent with our prior practice of not managing to the peak.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next.
Another question related to parking. We have the, the new landscape regs that we are working within, and in some cases, and, and Henry, you could probably expand on this in a moment, but we are, we are trying to also minimize the number of trees being removed from the site, so at times, we, we have come into a conflict where the, if we were to follow the regs verbatim to, for islands and planted islands between parking spaces, it may require the removal of a tree just to comply with that requirement. And so the question is, you know, would, would the planning and zoning accept striking a balance between that requirement and removal of trees?
What I would suggest is that prior to submission of the landscape plan, you run it by Patrick and the staff and give them the trade-offs that you've, that you're considering. So if you have a mature oak with significant D B H, then rather than put in a new tree that let, we have enough professional talent on the staff that they could, that they could have input on that and balance the choices, so when it comes to us, it is well-balanced. So I would just suggest that you have your landscape person sit with P and Z staff beforehand.
Okay, very good.
As regards the landscaping, you know, we're looking for natives and we're looking for deep roots. Again, we're looking for flood management, we're looking for sustainability. So it's the trade-off because you've got the parking with heat island effect. I mean, the trees look pretty there, but those are the considerations. We're also, as you know from the regulations, prioritizing the protection of adjacent neighbors, but looking at this, if this is what it's going to appear as, you should have a sufficient buffer from any residential neighbor. Okay. Any other comments from the commission to that question? Okay. And what else, sir?
So one, we're, we're balancing, again, the number of trees that we're removing. As you can see, you know, the, the bulk is related to the siding of the building on the north part of the site, so we have some offset to make up with planting of new. I think with our, our initial count, we're not going to have enough area on-site to, to do a complete offset of what's being removed. And so, you know, we have a question about are they, is the commission willing to make, strike a balance for that? are the, is the commission willing to make, strike a balance for that as well? And there are other competing interests such as site distances for safety on the entrance and egress points, as I mentioned. And also for the SSIC, School Safety Infrastructure Council guidelines, specifically with regard to the near the entrance to the building and so forth, where landscaping is is suggested that it's kept to a minimum to avoid hiding spaces you know, around the entrances and and around the site, in fact. So I think it's another one of those issues that we are going to be looking to strike that balance between replacement of trees as well as the landscaping for the buffering.
Do you, do you have an idea what your total tree removal and replacement is going to be?
I think Henry has.
Yes, we're, we're, right now, we're looking at around twenty three hundred DBH, twenty three, twenty four, depends on the scheme, this, you know, it's kind of an evolving scheme. And
I'm sorry, you said how many?
Twenty three hundred, twenty four hundred inches of DBH.
Okay.
There is, there are quite a few large mature trees on on this site, so every time you know, you you cut something, we did meet with Dr. Kramer on site and and for instance, I think Kent mentioned where we're entering in with the bus lane off of Orchard, right near Coach Lamp. There is a very large tree, but it's a dead ash. So Dr. Kramer did not seem to think that that was gonna issue. He would even count, but there are a large number of trees. We're looking at replacing right now with the planting plan, we've generally come up with about eighteen hundred. So we're, we're shy, the the full replacement, and that's one of the questions, I guess, we need to ask, we may run out of, we may have limited areas where we can put things to avoid, you know, dis- disruption of sight lines. We also have quite a bit of existing tree covering. We did talk with Dr. Kramer about some of the natives that do well as understory and so we helped to, we hope to help buffer that even further with some understories that will grow up and protect some of the neighbors to the north and to the west, but you know, we we're limited in the number of varies because it is a school, there are athletic fields that I'm sure the athletic director wants to keep a lot of leaves off of and.
Off of his turf, yes.
Yeah, and and as Kent mentioned, we have se- security concerns that we're going to need to address with, you know, the state as well to make sure that we're in compliance with that. So is, again, it's a balance. We are trying to, as I put it, lay this building lightly on the land and to your point about impervious, you know, pavement, Andrew and I are working to actually provide some pervious pavements in various locations where they make sense, actually in lieu of more conventional pavement and including that fire lane, there'd be some impervious, impervious pavement along that that would accommodate that drive. So you know, we're, we're doing our best to be very careful to respect not, not overburdening the site with either drainage or pavement.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the commission? I I think, Patrick, I would give the same answer to, given the the strength of the staff we have, that staff evaluate, work with the applicant to to strike the balance and obviously conservation if if you deem that that's important. Any comments from the commission?
I think actually, understanding that the two issues of site distance as safety and the state regulations on security. That's, that's the priority.
Yeah.
And if we're sacrificing trees to maintain that priority, that's important.
Yeah.
With other schools that we've done, yes, trying to get as many trees back onto the site, but it's got to actually make sense. If we're just putting trees on a site to put them back.
Very good.
Not a great idea, you know. The appropriate landscaping of the site is actually probably the, the real, the real priority.
Yep.
And getting, getting the trees or whatever vegetation needs to go back in the right place, the right type is actually the thing to really follow.
Very well said. Okay. Does the commission, I'm sorry, do you, Mr. Morehart, do you all have more or should we turn to public comment?
I just had one last question that I'd like to ask. We have that rock outcropping that I mentioned earlier, right?
Yeah, I've been thinking about that. Talk about, talk, yeah, I know.
So we have, in this version of the site plan, we have that being removed and
Yes.
this area being flattened out and that those tree removals are in the count that Henry just mentioned. You have an alternate plan that that preserves a good portion of that as an option, and we wanted to get the the commission's feeling on that.
Bokes, what do you think?
My opinion is that the site, sites should be considered a blank slate. If for some reason, the optimum layout of the site needs to sacrifice that rock outcropping to make it work logically and safely, it should be sacrificed. If you're trying to save it, you know, some of it, that's fine. It would seem to me, understanding what was that rock outcropping when that school was built? Was it something that the building committees at that time in nineteen fifty just didn't want to deal with? Or did they actually think it was a feature to work around? But to me, it's if if this, if it's in the way, it could be sacrificed.
Yeah, I've done so many graduate, done so many graduation pictures. It is bankrupt. So what else? What else? Other thoughts from the commission?
Well, just that, I mean, if you cut it back, because it's right on the field there, you are going to have to cut it back a bit because you don't want someone running for baseball and running right into the rock outcropping, right? So not sure. Well, you're gonna have to take a lot off, as you say.
Yeah, in this version, it's all being removed and and this area is being kind of flattened out and then replanted, as you can see, the proposed replantings here. We do have another version that that keeps a portion of it. It would, this northern portion would have to be removed to accommodate the field.
You realize that that rock outcropping may go very far down, right?
We do, we do.
So that idea of having all the beautiful plantings may not work out so great?
Well, it's also going to be a budget discussion point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure because I, I if it was left there, there may be a good reason to a structural, you know, a cost reason. About Mr. Lo.
Yeah, I, I, what is the, what is the downside to taking out what is necessary and leaving some portion of it? Am I missing something here?
No, you're, you're not. It's, it's possible, though, the concern we have, you know, when we look at the grading of it is it goes up fairly substantially, maybe twenty, twenty five feet, you know, and that's on the edge of the ball field. And so if we left it, if we cut it out, we would have a vertical cliff, if you will, one on one. It may be worst case, two on one. It it becomes a little bit of a liability as well. Some child could fall off of it as well. So, you know, we did, we, we have looked, as Kemp has noted, we have looked at preserving it in a couple of different versions, but it does seem to make a lot of sense to simply remove it and and allow that site to be used. And Andrew and I are looking for various places to you know, put storage of rainwater, stormwater. And there may be a need to use the rock on site to provide additional fill because we are raising portions of the site a little bit, because there are lower, they're wetter soils, you know, down toward the field. So there's a number of reasons to want to remove it.
So, yeah, so I want to get to that in a second. So the, I think one of the questions then we're going to ask you is, yes, our special permit standards do say to preserve such natural features. Mr. McRae put it very well that we would evaluate optimizing the use of the site for the best educational facility we can develop, that we would give a great deal of weight to that. But at the same time, you may find it prohibitively expensive, or the Board of Estimate may find it expensive when that you go to them if you remove this whole thing, because I have a, I don't know, do you have any idea how deep it goes?
We, we don't know.
We assume it's probably bedrock.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's bedrock. That's, I mean,
It goes all the way down.
It goes all the way down. So you may have to have a, you know, a hodgepodge plan on this because my sense, having been there, that's a landmark, but I'm not saying that for the sentimental value, I'm saying it's because I kept looked at it and thought it was bedrock. Okay, about the drainage, one of the things we were very interested in when you come back is to look at, because I don't, I have a sense of having walked this, the whole campus, what, two years ago? And it does get sloshy in places. Particularly, and I get turned around with the new plan, but I actually think of it as where the new school building is going to be where it gets sloshy. You're saying that it gets sloshy down by the new fields.
No, no, I was, I was saying, we, we potentially could use that rock if they processed on site to help with some of the general base under the roads and or general fill where we needed it under the building, because to your point, you're, you're correct. It is a little bit wet in the fields where the new school.
In the current fields.
The current, the current fields and where the new school is going to go. So one of the things that we were looking at is, that's a lower area by four or five feet. One of the things we're looking at is you know, the entrance in off of Orchard, we're bringing it in at a fairly mild percentage slope so that that walk is walkable for the kids. You know, we don't want to exceed five percent certainly, and we'd like to be a little bit less than that. But that means that the the finished floor of the building and it needs to be set at a certain elevation. That raises us above the existing fields to to a degree. It also helps us not cut as much into the hill because the building and the finished floor is raised up. So it helps in a number of ways, gets, it does allow us to get out of any sort of raised water table and it it does, you know, provide a much better access off of Orchard where we're not coming down a steep lane for either a walk or a drive. So we're looking at that. And again, Andrew Whiten and I are looking at the drainage overall. We, you know, have two things in mind. One is we want in to meet LID and meet Greenwich's interest in, in, you know, stormwater recharge and what have you on the site when it's all done. But we also have an initial charge to make sure that the site works for the duration of construction where you actually have two buildings in place and and extra drive. So it's, it's just a consideration we're looking at for the entire design is how, how do you stage this? How do you make sure that everything works throughout the entire process?
And y'all didn't mention it in the narrative, but you are going to run this, the existing school parallel while you're building, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the other thing, of course, since you touched on it, is we're going to be looking for how you're going to stage everything. And where you're going to put the trucks and where you're going to put the materials and and how, while running the existing school, we're going to keep them safe. We can give you probably the best example is, if if you want to see it, I I think, you know, New Lab is a great example, the New Lebanon School, because that's what we did there, but it's worth thinking. Have you talked to our Department of Public Works at all about how you're laying it out versus the high and the low spots and about drainage?
We have been in touch with Juan Paredes.
With Juan, okay.
On this site. So yes, he he is aware and we've been talking, it's still in in schematic, but certainly.
Okay. And has he been supportive of the concept of relocating the building?
Yes, he he was supportive of what we're planning to do. We've gone over the watersheds and what he's has concerns with regards to drainage, just in the greater context of the neighborhoods and and what's happening, since there is considerable existing infrastructure on site for the stormwater.
Yeah.
So we, we, we understand what he, he needs from us and we'll be working with him closely.
So there's a relatively high water table and what's the, what's the grade change between the two ends of the property?
Henry, do you have that off the top of your?
You can just tell us all that stuff when you come back. It's, it's going to be in your application. We're just, we're going to ask you all these questions and we're going to be playing with it for, you know, a whole weekend once you submit it. So I'm getting too much into the weeds is what someone would say, but I'm just thinking about the flooding and paramount, first and foremost, is of course, child safety. Let's turn to public comment. And we have some hands up. And our first person is Steph Cowie. And followed by Alex Pop. And then Myra Klockenbrink and Joanne Messina, who's going to talk about trees, I bet. Steffi, if you would go ahead.
Can we take their presentation down?
Yeah, let's take the presentation down so we can hear the speakers. They may ask you to bring them up, but for now. Hi, Steph, we can see the top of your head. There you go.
Hi, I'm, I'm away. If I have bad coverage, I apologize. Thanks for taking my call. I appreciate it. So I'll just say a few things. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Albin and members of the Commission, Steph Cowie, I'm the First Life and Advisory Committee for People with Disability Liaison to the Central Middle School Committee. Additionally, my son attended Central Middle School, our districted middle school, and also I served as co-president at CMS and most recently, co-president of Greenwich High School. Over the last year, the committee has worked tirelessly to move this project forward. The school site is was based on the direction of the ed specs and keeping students in place during construction. This is also the desire of the Central Middle School community for the children to remain together and in place. The proposed new Central Middle School campus is safety and accessibility at the forefront of all campus decisions. Safety and accessibility for students to and from this campus are top of mind. Keep in mind, there are no sidewalks surrounding two sides of this campus, Orchard and Sandwich. I am in full support of the separation of the bus and vehicle entrances, bus entrance on Orchard and a right turn out only onto Orchard. This approach will ease traffic concerns surrounding Central Middle School with cars no longer queuing on Indian Rock, which most know this is a major pain point and buses competing to get in and out of the school on Indian Rock. Looking forward to DPW providing their feedback and steps to implement these safety improvements. I love all of these things and especially the speed cameras. Madam Chair, sidewalks, crosswalks, increased sightlines and stop signs that may ease the speeds and congestions on the three roads which surround Central Middle School campus. I'm in full support of creating the safest campus for our students and support the safety of surrounding streets and neighbors as well. And Madam Chair, you are correct that some parents do not follow the safest of drop off, drop off procedures. Having been on this campus and several others, specifically the high school, this is a problem at most schools and needs to be truly worked on. We hope that the queuing capacity will support these needs. Additionally, there is concern regarding landscape regulations as it pertains to school campus. The committee and architects are truly trying to strike a balance to make sure sightlines and the entire campus are are meeting the SSIC and school standards, state standards, which you have heard further about today. Very excited about the parking on campus that it will increase. It's also great that there will finally be truly accessible parking that is compliant. This is going to be a school that will stand the test of time for eighty plus years. We will be safe and accessible campus and and school for all of our students. And looking forward to following and supporting this project as we move forward. And we appreciate your support as well. Thank you all and have a wonderful day.
Ms. Cowie, if I could, I just ask you one question.
Yes.
Given your role on Advisory Committee, are you satisfied with all the ADA that you've seen so far in the site plans?
So far, everything has been spot on. You know, they think about things more than I would even think about it, and they have been truly responsive to any questions or or needs. So it looks really good. And especially, there were some questions that came from some of the community members, two of them specifically, that some children do walk, you know, in a wheelchair. Basically, they're transported in a wheelchair along Orchard and did have concern and still had concern that there really was no easy access to the campus. They'd have to traverse onto Indian Rock then around and it just, you know, they were looking for a straighter, possibly a sidewalk on Orchard to access. So they want to make sure that that is, you know, top of mind that there are some students that will be attending Central Middle School in the future that do have accessibility needs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great week.
Next speaker is Alex Pop, and after that is Myra Klockenbrink.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to express a couple of viewpoints. Now, first, I want to just talk about the the trees and I just want the Central Middle School, the neighbors, just to be be aware, because we mentioned New Lab and there's a lot of lessons that could be learned from there. First of all, if you, if you went up to this, to New Lebanon, you see that the parking lot is severely underplanted and there's no shade trees, not, not one. There's a thin barrier between or buffer between the neighbors and the school. That probably should have been a little, little wider to accommodate some couple larger trees. New Lab also has a large, oversized bus loop that's severely underplanted. There's two tiny oaks, one is dead. And there's a couple thin dogwoods that are kind of out of place. If you go to the playground, it's, it's shadeless. And I was told like last, last year, the summer school, some of the children had to stay inside because it's too hot. So wherever the Some of the children had to stay inside because it's too hot. So wherever the, the students congregate, there needs to be plenty of shade.
Perfect, great point.
If you walk by New Lebanon in the um, any time in the afternoon. The building roast, the cinder block siding just radiates the heat. And I don't know like how that's energy efficient. Um, just the amount of money or the energy needed to cool that. It has to be, you know, just a, a large amount.
And, and Mr. Pop, Mr. Pop, just to clarify that on the inside, a cinder block is not normally, doesn't uh, it, it doesn't always transmit. The heat, but the problem is you're creating a heat island. So your, your point is accurate. Go ahead. So one more point you had.
And, and, and also like just the neighborhood needs to be aware that any stipulation from the tree warden. Doesn't mean the trees are actually going to be planted because at New Lebanon, uh, there was, there was supposed to be plant, they came up, I think forty. Six, forty-three trees short. Um. So I'm, I'm hoping if, you know, when, whatever the number of trees that they eventually clear and that they come up short. Uh, maybe they could, they could probably easily uh, accommodate another forty, fifty, sixty trees at New Lebanon. Um, and I, you know, I, I'm not the expert, but my brother is, I talk to him quite a bit and he, he could easily uh, help out with that plan.
Yes.
So but any tree plan, but any plant, plant should be funded prior to the removal of any of the trees.
I think I could have used you at a meeting very recently with um, some people. Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Myra Clockenbrink. Believe. Myra, you didn't come in. Let me try that again. There she is.
Thank you, thank you. Took a minute there. Um, while I'm here to represent uh, net zero build of the school. And that's not being covered in this meeting. I would like to comment that as co-chair of the Greenwich Pollinator Pathway. That the inside edge of the tree line along Orchard, um, there are. A um, substant- there is a substantial stand of sassafras that is native. It's beautiful. It's actually difficult to fully remove because it sprouts back, it's clonal. And I would encourage it to be preserved um, as a valuable uh, understory tree. Um, and it's already there. Part of the problem of all these landscaping plans we get. And we install and uh, they look beautiful for a year and then they die. Uh, because it's difficult to maintain them. Um, even with uh, Margarita. If you got your impervious surface to the extent you want, it's still um, a heat island. Um, and it's very difficult to establish trees and plantings in an area. Um, surrounded by concrete and asphalt. So we already have this marvelous uh, stand of. Sassafras, I think they got cut, cut back recently, but they are um. Uh, they're a, a tough plant. They'll come back and they're gorgeous. So just my two cents.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The next speaker is Joanne Messina and the last speaker is Dino Urso.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, Mr. LaRoe, can you pull up my colleague's map? Francia Alvarez's um, map as I speak. Um, I want to thank um, the presenters as well as the commissioners. I was on the public um, presentation as well. And uh, my daughter did go through Central Middle School and my office is down the street, so I'm on Orchard. Often, so know the area well. Um, I am concerned. Um, as Madam Chair said about the, the tree count. Um, but also want to say that obviously safety is first. I think the queuing idea on the property makes a lot of sense. Um, I was concerned when I heard the um, initial. Speaker speak about what the Board of Ed was asked for and nothing was said about the benefits of the tree canopy. And I think that is just something um, we should keep in mind that there are benefits to the mature tree canopy. That we will be losing by um, constructing a new building. Um, but once that is decided, I think we have to talk about the balance most definitely. But it's not just about the building. It is about the benefits, the environmental benefits of the tree canopy. Um, do you want to say that also agree? Um, having been former chair of Parking and Traffic, that uh, parking spaces are not always the best alternative. Um, in keeping trees there. So there is not the heat island effect is, is really beneficial to the students. To the staff, to the administrators on campus. Um, also personally, I like the rock up cropping. Um, I think it's pretty wonderful and if it could be preserved. I think that would be wonderful. And as was said, BET may, may truly want us to, to maintain that. So um, in closing, yes, as the previous speaker said, we don't have a wonderful uh, track record. With the Board of Ed. Um, uh, specifically on the New Lebanon School. There were additional trees planted on other campuses, school campuses. I would suggest that we do that again for any trees that we cannot. Plant on this campus or replant on this campus to go to other school campuses, um, including New Lab. I think it's important also to make sure that any landscaping plan be approved by the town tree warden. And be um, budgeted fully. Again, we have history with the high school, with New Lab, with Ham Ab. That the trees were not planted as approved um, by a plan. So again, just really important that we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, um, folks, I just see that more hands have come up. We had not been limiting people's speaking time because we only saw, I only saw four speakers in the beginning. So when y'all come in, please try to focus your comments and keep them short, okay? Because uh, now we got more people. Next one is Dina Urso. Trouble getting you in. And then after that, somebody, James. James will manage that. Ms. Urso, if you would go ahead. Ms. Urso, if you would unmute. There you go.
Hi, I'm so. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dina Urso. Um, I'm a parent um, of three boys in G S. I'm also a lifelong resident. Um, my husband and I grew up in town and um, I'm the current pre- uh, president of the PTA. Um, I'm speaking today as a parent, but I do mention the PTA because it was, it's in that context that I've been really following the building committee meetings. And um, I just speak in support of the proposed sighting of the building. Uh, I hope it is one that, that your commission will uh, support. It addresses many of the shortcomings that um, I know myself as a parent and others I talk to feel that we contend with. Um, especially during drop off and pickup, um, or visibility of oncoming traffic and sightlines um, have always posed a problem with the um. The building being where it is and the, the driving uh, being what it is. Um, and I just want other quick point is that citing the building further back would also allow it to be more secure. Which is important to me as Greenwich's budget for at least the next upcoming year. Um, seems to be uh, causing a decrease in police presence at the public schools rather than increase or even um, keeping the status quo. So those two main points, um, I believe speaking as a parent, I know they're important to me and I believe many parents that I talk to. Um, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Urso. Uh, the next speaker is James, who. Wait a minute. What happened to him? James?
I saw his hand up, but then.
I brought him in. He was in the meeting. He may have lost his connection. There may be. Uh, Katie Nogaki. Uh, you're the last speaker then. And then. James is back?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll bring him up and then we'll just, we'll have Ms. uh, Nagati. Back.
Yeah, Nogaki. Uh, Ms. Nogaki, if you would go ahead and James, then you'll follow her.
Hello, thank you so much today for taking the time to speak to me. Um, my name is Katie Nogaki. I live at two nineteen Orchard Street, directly across from the proposed exit for the buses. Um, there was a major accident that happened on our property. We have four children um, in the past year. I won't get into details, but we have four children that currently attend the public schools in Greenwich, three that have. Run across that street many a times to get to Orchard, to get to school safely, um, because it was such an embarrassment to take a bus. To school from across the street. Uh, the proposed exit is mandatory. It's needed. We understand it. But gating that exit is essential to our house, not only the value of our home, the safety of our children. But the lifestyle that we'd like to lead. We are truly impacted by this new school at two nineteen Orchard Street. Um, with the exit being where it is going to be currently allocated for the buses. We ask that you please, please make sure that this is gated, um, both on weekends and during the school day. This is a huge imposition to our family and our life. We realize that it has to be done. We respect it. But the safety and the community that we live in um, will not be the same. And so we ask that. Um, this really be looked at in terms of those larger events and opening the gates. Last and not least, um, just think about the trucks and materials and where they're going to be entering and exiting.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I'm in a public place. This is really impacting my family drastically. And if you could really help with us. Um, to not have that just be a constant flow. We appreciate your time and thank you again.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if you heard that we did ask, um, that they definitely returned to us with a phasing plan and what they're, where they're going to store materials. And how they're going to manage the construction traffic because it's going to be a while. Thank you very much.
So much.
Our next speaker is James.
Hey, good day, guys, and thank you. I'll be brief. Um, James Walsh from Cosco. I have uh, two children. Uh, one will be attending uh, Central next year. Um, the other one is a few years behind her, uh, but two things I want to touch on. One, the walkability and the safety of children. I think that should be foremost. Um, in this plan, I uh, you know, I'm an advocate for the raised crosswalks. Maybe a stop la- uh, stop sign at Coach Lamp in both directions there because it's not just Coach Lamp, you know, where those kids are coming from. But Coach Lamp uh, connects to Jeffrey and Castle and Pine Ridge. So you know, that's a high probability that kids will just cut through the small ten foot gaps between those streets where a car can't get, but a kid can get. Uh, to walk to school. Um, the other uh, thought um, is for more accessibility from the west side of campus. Maybe along the edge of the fields. There seems to be a no pathway there. Uh, you know, kids coming from the high school or if you use the high school for overflow parking for an event. It might make sense to have an uh, a, a pathway through the campus that starts where Indian Rock uh, meets. Um. Uh, sorry, o- over by Fairfield where I'm blanking on the uh, name of the road uh, on the other side, not Orchard Road. But the other road, but we're Indian Rock.
And yeah.
Stand, stand.
Sandwich, thank you. And then just one more thing in the nice to have but not need to have category. Opportains to the stone wall that's along Orchard now. You, you know, I feel like stone walls are part of our cultural heritage in Greenwich and Connecticut and New England. And unfortunately, you know, Greenwich is not one of the handful of municipalities that has protections against uh, you know, for stone walls. So I would just uh, argue, um, you know, as far as the stones are removed uh, to make uh, the entrances and exits. Into the campus along Orchard, maybe uh, you, you know, they can go back into improving the stone wall. Because it is better in some places than others there. And you know, if we could keep it a dry stone wall, all the better. Um, so, so those are just my two thoughts. One in the definitely need to have and the other in the nice to have category. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. All right, that does our public comment. Um. Okay, so our job here is to give you some overall guidance on, I think we've said several overall. Uh. Primary concern, and we said it to you upfront, folks jump in if, if you think I miss anything, okay? Primary concerns, safety, walkability for the kids. Everybody's agreed. We're really glad there's decent ADA access. We're happy to see that. Uh, questions about the circulation. Hmm, still would love when you come back to see some data on that kind of long access way. A single access way like that being successful. I suspect many moms and parent, I should, shouldn't be sexist. Many parents around the world and nation bail on those sixty car queues and pull a K turn. So how do we prevent that? How do we keep it safe? Is there enough just data, a study, anything like that you can give us? I, I'm giving you feedback out of order, okay? Because someone just mentioned that clearly a staging plan. Uh, we're very interested because of the concern, trees. We have a great staff. Conservation has a lot of expertise. The best thing to do is to optimize, optimize as Ms. Messina, Ms. Ms. Messina also reinforced keeping the, the high canopy trees where you can. Um, and if that mean, and, and if that means you don't get it into the parking, let our staff work on that. Uh, we actually have landscape professional on staff. We're very fortunate on that because it was just luck, but she can. Um, and there's a lot of knowledgeable people. Uh. Patrick also has a lot of design background. So uh, those, those things, um. Concerned about the drainage, just because uh, Nick, um, you, you knew the, the. Topography, what was the great, the elevation change over the site?
I think uh, from the GIS that was supplied, it's something like a hundred and ten is the top. Elevation um, near Sandwich and the low is like forty, forty-five. That's down near the bu- existing bus loop. Um, so you know, that's the slope. It's, it's severe.
Sixty feet of change.
Yeah.
So you've got this big bowl, you're going to be accumulating water in and um, just that that gets managed. Uh, we were talking about yesterday, the severity of, of the storm events recently in the last twenty years. And uh, a lot of places in my neighborhood are running their sump pumps right now.
Hmm.
Uh, so, and, and had water and especially the folks that were in those bowls. So just a concern. If you've got, if you've got Mr. Paredes on bo- on board, that's great. Uh. So the parking trade off versus the trees, still want to see stuff on circulation, anything we can do and Patrick's going to be on it. Uh, as well on slowing down the traffic on Orchard Street. We like the raised crosswalks. Uh, where, did I leave anything out? I think that's kind of my list is can it, did I miss anything?
I think there's also, there's some suggestions, sorry, uh, Mr. McCray.
Yep.
No, uh. I think there was some suggestions in the traffic report that were um, definitely something I think DPW should um.
Address.
Or, or just, you know, have some comment on because I think they're interesting.
Yep.
Comments.
Okay. Do you want to talk about those?
Well, I, I just know that at the, the Fairfield Sandwich Road, you know, there's a sort of an odd historic intersection there with an island and. Um, as much as I've driven through that area, I never. Um, problematic, but um, I, I thought the comments were very um, well, you know, just observant. And I think there's some others on some of the other intersections, how the, the road, you know, the geometry of the roads are just. Um, probably not um, enhancing the experience. I'll just say it that way. I'm not going to say they're creating problems, but. Um, you know, so I, I, I just thought that was very astute that someone just pointed them out, so.
Okay. Mr. McCray.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so it looks like a good start. Is that a fair thing to say? It, it seems like it's on the good path. Uh. I'm curious, I, I'm very interested to see where DPW comes out and the location of the building and the drainage. Um. And that's all I've got. Anything else we can do for you guys?
No, thank you very much for all the comments. I appreciate the public comment as well. Uh, I'll just leave, leave you with a closing comment about the, the phasing plans. Absolutely. We'll have that in our package. Uh, our team is very well versed on uh, new builds on existing operational school sites. And, and we're very uh, familiar with the need for those phasing plans to get through a planning and zoning process.
And on the landscaping, on the last comment on the landscaping is there had been a disconnect, a communication disconnect. Between us and the Board of Ed and the Board of Estimate. Uh, they had not realized, there had not been clarity that landscape regulations are as mandatory. As any other zoning regulation and that it's by state law or that the tree warden has authority. State-enabled authority. And I think we've cleared that up. So everybody knows now. So the issues we saw on other school projects where the landscaping didn't happen was due to that disconnect. And we're hoping that folks get it. You know, everybody's on the. was due to that disconnect and we're hoping that folks get it. You know, everybody's on the same page now. So uh, I look forward to you having a smoother process with it. And having funding. All right, well, thank you for all the great work.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let me just get everybody. Everybody who doesn't, oh, Patrick, you're very fast. All right. Okay, it's just us chickens again. Alrighty, our next application is also a pre-app. And it is for the Whitby School, for uh an application to renovate and expand the school's existing maintenance barn and then create a new maintenance building on a parcel at three, at nine sixty-nine Lake Avenue in the RA four, and it's up by Parkway to place it for everybody. Mr. Cohen, welcome and hello.
Thank you and uh good evening, good afternoon, gentlemen, members of the commission, Bruce Cohen representing uh the Whitby School. Like uh many of the great educational institutions in Greenwich, as you've just heard, Whitby School uh is uh always looking for opportunities to uh improve uh their uh facilities. And this is an important but uh small example of that. Uh, as uh the uh Chairwoman stated, uh this is at the Whitby Campus, which is at nine sixty-nine Lake Avenue. It's been there since uh nineteen fifty-nine. Uh, and there's about thirty-two acres there now. I think uh the best way to approach this pre-application review is to go through some of the images that will help me quickly uh describe the project that uh the school uh has in mind. And then uh when that's over, maybe respond to a couple of comments that uh I heard during the uh yesterday's uh briefing. So shown in uh yellow is the school's campus consisting of about uh thirty-two acres, as I uh stated. The major school structure is to the uh west of the uh parcel. Uh, you may remember over a period of years, the school has been acquiring additional uh land. And that the those parcels uh were two uh lots uh off of uh what's known as Mary Lane, number three and number seven, Mary Lane. Uh, there is a house still existing at number three, number seven was demolished. And part of the project is to remove some of the driveway formerly serving the residents. The area that the the school is proposing uh to do its project is shown in the uh dashed line to the uh south of the uh property. Uh, and located on that uh little square is what's known as the exist existing barn, which is used uh really as a maintenance office, maintenance uh facility generally. Uh, and there's also uh a couple of small uh sheds that would be demolished as a part of this. Uh, the the next uh image, uh Pat, uh is again the uh survey version of what we're talking about, showing uh the additions. The addition to the uh to the existing barn is shown to the right. The new prefabricated uh maintenance shed where all maintenance facilities will move to is is shown on the left. Um, Pat, the next one. And that's the uh the major reason that the uh school would like to uh move forward with this uh plan, which is to extend the barn in the pink area and be uh able to uh use it for uh a a variety of uh purposes to really provide some of the interior space that uh it could use for uh for the kids, uh for classes, for uh a facility, for uh a a place for the children to go during recess when uh the weather's outside, the weather turns bad. There are a couple of bathrooms that exist there now, shown in the dark gray, which will be uh uh redone as as well. Uh, the next uh image shows the existing barn as it looks right now. And the next image shows the way uh it has been redesigned to uh accommodate the multipurpose uses that the school has in in mind. Um, the uh the next image, Pat, I think is another view of the same um, of the same renovated building. Uh, as you can see, it continues to have a barn-like appearance, but of course with a uh quite a different uh use. And the next uh image uh shows uh what the prefabricated new maintenance uh building is going to look like. Again, sort of barn-like in structure, there is a second uh floor to it that will uh be used just uh for uh storage. It would add a total of about two thousand feet to the campus. The addition at on the existing um uh renovated barn will add about a thousand square feet. And the final image, Pat, is the landscape plan, which shows in a little better detail uh the area that we're talking about, the renovated barn to the right, the new maintenance shed uh to the left. The parking lot will be uh restripped so as to eliminate one of the um larger vehicle spaces that the school really doesn't need uh to allow uh a handicap uh space to be installed, as you see it there. And if all goes well and the money holds out, the school would like to uh uh like to have a a sports court court by way of a bocce court uh to the left of the parking area. So that that's the basic concept of what the school would like to do uh to respond to um some of the comments that um that I heard yesterday. Um, th- there are really no secrets about what what the school has in mind. The school, uh like all schools, uh are always considering uh how their facilities could be improved. Uh, and uh the the I'm sure that there are goals that the board has uh long term. However, uh, there is a couple of factors that limit uh what the school can do, which is one, we're in the RA four zone, so we have uh serious uh zoning restrictions that must be adhered to. And of course, uh budgetary problems are always uh always have to be faced when the school, any school undertakes uh a a uh a new project like this. So um, the uh there there's nothing really uh that the the that the commission hasn't seen about what we're planning to do. There was a question raised uh about that business of uh of the coverage. Um, there is, there are two separate issues that uh will be bringing to your attention with the final application. If we go forward, one is uh green area, there's a very slight uh increase uh or I should say decrease.
Decrease.
In right in in green area, which the commission uh under two oh five seven D is authorized to uh to grant uh based upon the uh new uh landscaping that will be installed. Uh, the other issue has to do with uh uh the uh uh drainage question, which is completely distinct and the there is nothing that uh we're asking the commission to do about that. But uh uh the the school, as I mentioned, demolished the house that they acquired at seven uh Mary Lane less than five years ago. And under the uh town's uh drainage manual, there's a five-year look back in terms of determining the increase of impervious surface. In this case, based upon that look back, there is no increase in impervious surface. Uh, that uh that's very important because uh it allows the uh project to go forward based on uh an exemption of being uh less than five hundred uh square feet of additional impervious surface. So uh we're not asking the commission to do anything about that. We've, that's already been uh submitted to uh 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 the uh engineer, engineering division. And uh I I believe we qualify uh for the exemption. Wetlands has already reviewed this and has agreed that the project can go forward without a wetland application. So basically, uh tonight, we we're bringing this to you to take a look at, uh give us your comments. Based on the um uh architectural renderings and the nature of the project that we're doing, we hope that uh a a visit with the ARC may not be necessary, but of course uh that's in your your hands.
Okay, so just um quickly, Mr. Cohen, um, the first question we were asking was because you're managing your green area, your coverage, are you, as you do that, it does this, is the school doing what's absolutely right for them or is it constraining them in a way that limits their educational offering?
No, this is a very important uh a project to them because it adds usable uh educational space.
But do they feel good about how they're doing it?
Can they do something else in the future? Absolutely, but right now it's a funding issue.
Okay, gotcha. Um, so that was the key thing that we wanted to ask you about that. Uh, other commissioners, do you have, do you have points and questions? Mr. McCray. He doesn't raise his hand, he leans forward and that's how I know.
Yeah, Mr. Cohen, um, re- reading the the narrative, seeing the plans, everything. This is a, this is additions and alterations to the existing barn. That's how this is being presented.
Yes.
Um, I'm questioning and looking at the information in the package, it almost seems to me that it'd be easier to tear the barn down and start all over again.
I'm just trying to say that.
It was, it's, the roof line's completely different. You've got post and beam. It's kind of, kind of strange. I mean, even even, you know, can it be upgraded to uh current uh energy codes, so on and so forth? Um, I don't know if that's been considered, but I think actually it's one of those ideas that uh doing what's best for the uh for the school, it might be something to take a look at. It's rather not try to save something as opposed to if you want to do something that maybe lasts a lot longer and be more efficient.
Thank you. Uh, we'll we'll certainly look at that.
Yeah, I mean, that's really what we're at, what the question that came up yesterday. Uh, because you're managing your coverage, are you keeping this existing footprint and is that really the best thing for you? That was the biggest question we had. Uh, does anybody else have any comments? Nope. So I think we're basically good with it. Uh, would you be okay with? I would like, I would, here's what I would suggest to you. You come in with your application, let us look at it and let us make the call then. The ARC workload is not as bad as it was. My sense was this was relatively small changes uh that would not be very visible and that we do have the two architects on the commission and that we might be able to not have ARC for something that is fairly minimal. But um, we may see it and decide against. Would that be all right with you?
Well, absolutely. And and you know, based upon what Mr. McCray uh suggested, uh the it's very possible that the plan might change, but uh
Yeah.
Hopefully it won't and uh and we'll come back to you and uh get a decision at that time.
Okay, does any, uh if you don't mind, I'll turn to the public for comment. Does anybody want to uh comment on the Whitby School application? No comments on the Whitby School application and it seems that you have no great insights from us, right, folks?
I consider all your insights great.
I'm sure you do. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. All right, our next application is also a pre-app. Uh, Lamasa Realty for a pre-application review uh to confirm River Street lots, one fifteen and one sixteen is separate and distinct lots for building purposes. Uh, and that is at what is currently zero River Street, zero Hollowood Lane and twenty-eight Hollowood Lane. Uh, who is presenting, Mr. LaRoe?
Uh, Mr. Manganiello, and I thought um Mrs. Latella, but I don't see her in the room, so.
Okay, Mr. Manganiello, if you would, uh, actually Manganiello. Uh, if you would unmute, we're ready for you. Sir? Um, we're ready to hear the application on River Street. Mr. Manganiello?
Yeah, hello.
There you go. Great. Hello.
Well, thi- this is the first time we're really uh doing it, so you got to bear with us a little bit.
Oh, of course.
Okay.
So I'm Lisa Latella. I'm uh the real estate agent who sold him the River Street Hollowood Lane properties back in two thousand eighteen. Um, Anthony Manganello is also the principal partner of Lamasa Realty, which you would see written down in the application. Just want to mention before we start, this is not going to be a very long application because we've got some very specific questions and we can move this along. Um, I had submitted two narratives. Uh, there was an error uh made in the first narrative regarding the R six zone and five thousand square feet. So please um ignore that. The second uh revised narrative is somewhere buried in the rear of the online file. So I hope you've had a chance to take a look at that. But just to give you a little bit of background, um, in two thousand twenty, Lamasa Realty submitted a pre-application to the commission for an eight thirty G affordable housing project. And um took into a serious consideration all the comments made by the commission and the advice to scale down that project. Uh, there was uh, there were comments from the neighbors. He took their comments to heart as well. And um at that point, did not move forward with it and uh has looked into several designs since. And what he's done at this time is to scale everything down and propose a modest plan to build um a duplex on each of the two ri- uh rear River Street lots. Uh, the River Street lots do have a block to access. There is a deed at easement um to River Street, but there is a stockade fence that has been in existence for several years, a long period of time. Um, so a couple of things that we've wanted to discuss uh relate to zoning and how the board looks at the lot merger provision, Regulation six dash nine uh in relation to um the chain of title. So in nineteen seventeen, the Byram Land Improvement Company sold the two rear River Street lots to Suzie Manko. Uh, at the same time in a separate deed, they sold the two front Hollowood Lane lots to her husband, Paul Manko. So we're thinking that because these lots originated in common ownership, um the board uh may view it that way. Suzie did inherit by demise the the uh front Hollowood lots um around nineteen forty-two or so from her husband. Um, according to Regulation six dash nine, maybe you can correct me on this, but by demise of an adjoining um neighbor or adjoining property owner, it it seems to be an exception to Regulation six dash nine. So a couple of the questions that we have are um, does the board specifically look at this regulation as uh do they look at it to the letter of the law or is it a very, very strict interpretation? I think the answer from that smile is yes.
No, no, we always do everything to the letter of the law. So no matter what you say, I'm going to say, oh yeah, we do the letter of the law. That's why I cracked up. So don't worry. Um, uh, I would say to you that six nine gives commissions an option. And, okay. It gives, it gives, um, okay, can you hear me? I I can hear some back, okay. Mr. Manganello or who's ever?
I think that his phone rang and he stepped out of the room.
Okay, good. So you're, well, now I have you again, right? Ma'am, okay. So what six nine does, can you push him further out of the room?
Okay.
I'm sorry, he's.
Just shove him out the door. Do you know, just?
My attorney's on the phone, that's why.
And he's trying to figure out.
Oh, okay. So what six nine does is it essentially gives the commission an option. Would you disagree with that? Would you disagree with that, staff? No, right? We have an option. We do interpret our regulations to the letter, but where they give us a choice, we apply it to the site. And so we would weigh the fact that these lots were created in nineteen seventeen.
Actually, pr- prior to that, um.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter. The only thing that matters is that they were created prior to the creation of, of subdivision regulations and zoning regulations and that they are this under that, and it was before regulation. So we would consider that. And we would consider several other factors. What I actually wanted to say to you is you've got two pieces when you come in. The most important things are you're coming in with two totally separate applications. One is you're asking us to confirm the lots.
Right.
And we would do that confirmation based on or not, based on the historic circumstances. We have some choices, but we follow our regulations, but the regulations give us choice. So we would confirm or not depending on the history. The second thing is you come in with an application for what, um, Mr. Manganello wants to do for development. And were you listening yesterday, ma'am?
Um, was I listening yesterday?
Yeah, to our meeting note. So, uh, so we discussed it and we would, we, you come in then with a second application, which does development. I assume you're looking at development of River Street of, and as well as Hollowood. So you would come in with the development of those once you know, and, and you could come in with those side to side, back to back applications. Uh, and what we discussed yesterday is just for you to consider, uh, Patrick, that is all in a flood zone, correct?
Yes.
That, yes, the property is, yep.
So you're just going to need, the development plan's going to need to incorporate that it's in a flood zone. And be considerate of that, that when we look at development, we look at, uh, in the R six, we look at being able to accommodate cars that live there on the property and be able to circulate as much as we can. And those are the things we look at. Again, we have some flexibility. We have some choices, but we're looking at, can you accommodate the cars on site? You are in a flood zone, so you'll have to be responsive to the flood zone regulations. Patrick's an expert, so is Tracy. They can both help you and our staff knows, is as expert as they are. I won't say that again. Okay, you're supposed to smile. Um, uh, so, um, so we have flexibility in how we do it. And we're going to look at the facts of your case. Um, we noticed that the narrative had an error about the five thousand square feet yesterday. Um, it also omitted, um, a, a Supreme Court case on the, the issue of subdivisions. But, uh, the commission has it and Patrick is, Patrick and Tracy can happily share it. So does that answer your questions?
A little bit. Well.
Okay, go ahead.
But actually, so you, you're basically saying that, um, there's flexibility here.
We look at the facts of each case. We have an option. We have an option how we approach this and we look at the facts of each case. One of the things we look at, for example, that we, we spent time on when we discussed this yesterday. We look at the entire neighborhood and how the whole neighborhood has been developed. And is what you're proposing consistent with the entire neighborhood?
That's why he has scaled it down.
There you go. So we'll look at all that and then we'll respond based on what's, and, and Mr. Macrae made this point yesterday. What's the historic development pattern? Are you doing something consistent with the neighborhood? Are you adding more cars that are going to be parked on the street, those kinds of things? But again, that's a separate application. Your first job is that you're going to come in and get the lot confirmation. Ask for us to confirm the lots. You can at the same time submit to us a development application for whatever lots you, you end up with or want to develop. Uh, that's your decision. If you want to do it at the same time.
Is this a pre-application you're saying or is?
This is only a pre, no, you're done with the pre-application.
Come back. Is there another pre-app, is this another pre-application?
No, ma'am. Then you become a formal application. In the pre-application, we say things to you like, hey, just know, just remember that this is a flood zone and you're going to have to make sure you know about that and that you follow the flood zone regulations when you come in. So we try to warn you about big things that could, that could be, that you need to think about.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, but when you come in, you're coming in as a formal application. And what we're telling you now in the pre-app is just things we saw about it, what you need to think about. And the biggest thing is, hey, you've got undersized lots.
Right.
So we have a technical expression we use, which is don't put ten pounds of potatoes into a five pound bag. Think about how to manage the small lots, how you're going to develop them so that they work. And you're in a flood zone.
Right.
Um, anything else commissioned that you would add to that for factors they should consider for the formal application?
Yeah, I think you covered it.
Okay, there you go. So you come back now for a formal application to ask us to confirm or not confirm those slots. And at the same time, or at a different time, you come in with your development proposal.
Okay.
And what you're going to build. And, um, everybody on our staff is really good on flood zone regulations, so, um, they're, they'll help you. Um, and you'll need to look at how you're going to do drainage when you have the development plan. Uh, what have I not said, Patrick and Tracy?
Drainage, drainage is the only thing I was going to add, that there's a significant drainage manual. So there's, uh, the problems of developing in the flood zone and then also the problems with draining or containing drainage in the flood zone. So those are going to be major design issues, not commission decisions, but, you know, design criteria.
Madam Deputy.
And there may be cross easements that are needed for circulation and parking.
Yeah, you mentioned that in your application, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What would Tracy mention just now? Was that you may need those, those easements and you've already got them in your narrative. You raised the que, you raised the issue of the River Street lots.
Yes.
Lotter lots or whatever you do, um, they only get accessed from Hollowood. So you're going to need easements because you won't always have common ownership.
The one other question that came up, uh, because there is the deed at easement to River Street and it ends right at his lot line. Is, is that actually, um, owned by the town of Greenwich? The, I'm talking about the unimproved portion of River Street. It's not.
No, to our knowledge and what you submitted to us is all I know. And you said in your application that the Byram Development Corp owns that.
So that's what we believe. Um, uh, Mr. Manganello had a, a cursory title search done last year. And it, the, um, title person took it to a certain point. And the last line said, it appears that the Byram Land Improvement Company is still the rightful owner.
But, um, it does not impact what you're doing with us because we only care about what's within your property lines and that you provide. And given the situation with River Street never having been extended, we're going to be looking at whether someone can access your rear lots, those River Street lots from Hollowood. So we don't care who owns what is not within your property lines.
Okay, so we did have, um, a, a proposed.
But feel free to disagree, Steph. Go ahead, ma'am.
We did have a proposed driveway, um, submitted that went up the center, uh, area of Hollowood Lane to the two lots. So we did submit that.
Okay, and, and what will happen is the Department of Public Works will eventually have to sign off on whether or not they like that driveway. For access, A, it has to comply to the zoning regulations and B, the Department of Public Works has to tell you that it works for them, so to speak. And so, but first and foremost, focus, you want to do the lot confirmation. Your second step is you look at the development plan and you consider it in terms of the access, the flood zone and the drainage. And that you'll be able to accommodate as much of your residential vehicles on site.
Okay, and that's why he wanted to go a lot smaller scale with what he was going to do here. Not do a huge development so that it doesn't impact neighbors. Parking would be contained on the properties because each lot is sixty-two, fifty square feet. So, uh, it, it should work well that way. We've seen undersized lots be approved. And, um, we're looking at this. Now, he did have one question, um, about, um, the lot area being undersized and the regulation being seventy-five hundred square feet. If, um, if, uh, the lot confirmation was going to be denied, this is a, an if question. Uh, should he go for an eight thirty G three family there? Does, does that make it?
That is, that is not something we can address. So all we can tell you is you have what's called a legal, you have legally non-conforming lots. They were created before the beginning of zoning regulations and they are legally non-conforming. And all we're allowed to do by law is answer, is look at the thing that you have before us and answer that. So if you're saying, oh, and if this doesn't work, can I go to something else? We can't answer you there. Okay, we can only look at what's proposed to us at any given point in time. So you, um, you and Mr. Manganello would have to decide what's best, given whatever we do. Does anybody want to add anything kind of out there? Okay, he's, okay, just look at it. Okay. Um, ma'am, I'm going to just ask, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application on River Street and Hollowood Lane? Anybody from the public? No. Okay, so your next step is just make sure you're ready to go with a lot confirmation. You file a formal application. It's a final, um, they're going to need to call it a final subdivision, Patrick? So you would file, uh, and they'll give you all the guidance, a final subdivision application. And then we decide on that. And at the same time, you can submit a development plan on the, so first we would decide your lots and then we would look at your development plan and decide that.
Probably we'll do one, uh, one thing at, you know, at a time. Find out about confirmation. It's a logical thing to do.
Your decision.
We definitely appreciate your time and input and, um, thank you, thank the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okey-doke. Our next one is another pre-application and this one is at thirty-one Prospect Street. And it is, uh, it is, it is to connect two existing buildings and to add two bedrooms to these buildings to create a five, uh, a five bedroom two-family. And.
Zhao Zhang Tang as the agent, but I see another hand. There you go.
Yeah, I see Zhao, Zhao Yilin. Hello, if you would unmute. Mr. Lin, if you would unmute.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zhong Xian Tian.
Oh, okay. So this is Mr. Ten. Hello.
Yes, uh, from thirty-one Prospect Street. And today I'm here to present my proposal for my, uh, property. After several consultation with your office.
Great.
Uh, zoning enforcement office tell me I have F A R four thousand, one thou, one hundred thirty square footage. Currently I have one thousand seven hundred. So that's me, I have room to develop, to better utilize my property. I plan to first remodeling and existing back dwelling interior with a one-bedroom. Also plan to build up with a dormer addition to attic to make a livable space. Number three, I going to build out an addition to connect two dwelling for two-unit application. And, uh, if I may, I can share my screen. You, let's see, it's.
If you, if you tell Patrick what you would like to share or, or, um, Ms. Ms. Kolokowski, um, from your submission, they can share your screen. Oh, okay, Patrick enabled you. Go ahead. You can share your screen.
Yeah, Mr., if Mr. Tang is ready, we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Tang. You'll have to turn your camera on as well. I, or maybe not.
Oh, yeah, yes, I do.
Okay. Okay. Hello, Mr. Ten.
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, this one I show you my. My property, as you can see, I have, uh.
Not seeing it.
Not seeing?
No, did you hit share screen? And then confirm share screen again? Nope, it's not happening. So, um, oh, there you go. Great. Great. All right.
Okay, so can you see that?
Um, yeah.
Okay, this is my property. As you can see, in the back all the way, I have, uh, seventy feet by forty feet, uh, backyard. And, uh, I have, currently I have a three parking spot on my driveway. My proposal is to add two more parking space in front. As you can see, I have zooming to try to make a this improvement for eco-friendly. Currently there are mountain tree, green tree on the border. I plan to add three more tree in this area for parking surface. I use turf stone for the surface. Therefore here we have a nine feet and eighteen feet, four inches deep. So it's sufficient for two parking, uh, uh, if I may. So I asking for, uh, commission to consider grant me the chance to add two more parking space in front of my house. Now I open, uh, can answer a question.
Okay, the fir, the first thing I'm going to do before we ask you questions is I'm going to have Mr. LaRoe and Ms. Kolokowski talk a little bit about your property with you.
Okay.
Mr. LaRoe? And do you want to bump the sharing and show him the, the, the maps or whatever you want to? Okay.
Uh, so Mr. Tang, your property is, uh, possibly encumbered with a flood zone or the buildings, I should say, the property definitely. And with that, uh, there may be some additional design criteria that you need to undertake to make the addition work. Um, you may not be able to just connect the building to the other building and it comply with the flood zone regulations, which is requires a certain height of the first floor above the, um, above what's known as the, um, the flood zone or the base flood elevation required by, by the federal government. So there may be an issue there. The other issue with the building in the rear is considered an accessory structure and has different setbacks than the building in the front. And when you connect the building in the front to the accessory in the rear, the whole building becomes the primary structure. And therefore you're creating a non-conforming condition by merging those two buildings. So you would need, you possibly would either need to reconsider the design or seek other measures like a variance to do the work you're proposing because you don't, you, you're, you're changing the use of the rear building and bringing it and merging it into the front building. So it's a little bit more complicated than just building the connector between the two.
And, and, and one of the things, what Mr. LaRoe, um, is saying is that behind your building, okay, first of all, you said the mapping, it's all in a flood zone, Patrick?
Property is definitely encumbered by a flood. Property is definitely encumbered by a flood zone. The building may not be, it's very, it's very likely that it it's it's possible that it's not.
And we know that the flood zones are about to be updated. So we don't know. And so, Mr. Tan, this is federal law. It's the, it's FEMA that tells us about whether or not you're in a flood zone. And then if FEMA tells us, the Federal Emergency Management tells us that you're in a flood zone, you will have to build a little differently. So we would help you with that and we would tell you. Uh, but behind your building, on the map that we looked at, there's something called the floodway. And you can't build on that at all, I don't know if you know that.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to bring it up, Madam Chair, thank you for getting to that point.
Uh, if you can see from my screen.
Yes.
For S G I map.
Yes.
From the.
No, you're not sharing anymore, you're gonna need to reshare.
Okay, all right, so.
Thank you.
So. If you can see from this one.
Yes.
And wetland department already gave me go ahead, say.
Yes.
In the flood zone.
So this is very, this is, this is one of those things that's hard to work with when you're a resident. Wetlands is Connecticut and its state. And then in addition, the federal government, the entire United States, the federal government, the Federal Emergency Management. Classifies whether or not you're in a flood zone, so there are two questions. One is whether or not, ah, who's that, is that Patrick?
It is, sorry, I I guess I can't share.
So Patrick, so, yeah, you have to buy, so, so, Mr. Tan, the federal government decides if you, if there is flooding. And they limit what you can build if it's flooding in a flood area. Then in addition, if there is a river near you, wetlands controls it. I know it's a lot of different pieces. Uh, so there is, Patrick is showing you, you know, actually Diane's, the was the map, the survey that Diane side, this is the FEMA. So this is FEMA's map, Mr. Tan?
Yes.
And the FEMA map, I don't know, it's hard to quite see where your building is, Patrick's outlining it for you. But you see those diagonal lines all in through here are a what's called a floodway. And we're gonna have to make sure that you comply with all these federal laws. Or that's what you're gonna have to look at when you develop this. So, yes, you have F A R. Um, but you may be limited because you're in a federal flood zone.
Um, yeah, actually, I send an email to inland department from our wetland department.
I know, but this is different from wetlands, wetlands is is.
This is a federal program. And you you would need, and there and there's a zoning regulation attached to this designation by the feds. And you would need a surveyor to plot the the current boundaries on your parcel. The ones that you have from two thousand. Be outdated or ninety-nine.
But why don't you show that, Patrick, can you just show the old survey?
Absolutely.
And Nick, I do see your hand. Um, so, Mr. Tan, there's wetlands, inland wetlands is is state of Connecticut. Then in addition, you have federal, United States laws. And they both impact what you can build on your property. So you've done the one thing, now you need to do the other. And the first thing you need to do is get a survey, you have that, yeah, and Patrick's gonna show you again your old survey? And that's what you're gonna have to go work on? Because you have to figure out what you can do in building and what, and you also have a report in your material. From someone who highlights for you, I think he mentions that you're in a floodway, are you, there he is, okay. All right.
I haven't had the longest time, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, it's not.
That's okay, so, Mr. Tan, Mr. Tan, if you go back and you look at that two thousand five survey that you sent us. You'll see those diagonal lines on your property. That means it's a floodway and you need to get another survey to find out if you're still in a flood zone. Because it says on your survey, you are in what's called an A E flood zone, so you need to get another survey. And you need to see if you're still in a flood, if still in a flood zone and if you have a floodway right behind your house.
Yes.
Then, when you're doing the addition, you're connecting your buildings, what Patrick told you is you have to make sure that you comply with the setbacks. Oh, thank you, perfect, okay, ooh, I hope somebody can read that, because I have by at eyesight, see where it says floodway there?
Yes.
Is that where it says floodway, yes, thank you. Okay, so that's what you need the new survey for. And then somewhere here, see where it says zone A E?
Yeah.
That means you're in a United States government designated flood zone. And you have to check, you have to get another one of these surveys because they are gonna, they've updated the flood zones. And you have to find out if you have any limitation. Then you would, then what Patrick told you is you have to make sure that when you connect the buildings. That you have enough of what we call a setback, the distance from the property lines to comply with the zoning regulations. And did the R six, it's not, it's not ten and fifteen, that's the R twelve, somebody help me.
It's five and ten.
Five and ten.
Right, right now, uh, right now, the building, existing house is nine point eight and six. If he connects it, he'll only have five and five, because the, if the connection for the accessory structure, which is legal now, is five and five. If he connects it, he'll have a.
So we're talking.
Creating a non-conforming structure.
So we're talking, so we're talking almost in code, but what we're telling you, Mr. Tan, is, and and planning and zoning stuff can help you figure this out. You're going to have to get a variance if you want to connect these two buildings, that's the first thing you're, after you found out about the flood zones. The next thing you would have to do is fight, is get a variance, because your building is going to be too close to the property line, your back building.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for the clarify this for me. I planning, actually, I spoke with your planning and zoning office and I was planning for engineer survey. And I bring this, actually, two thousand five survey to your zoning enforcement department, spoke with Stephen Formica. And Stephen tell me said, uh, uh, I was safe, it's not, with a new update. Uh, computer in data from FEMA and I was not in the flood zone. But I will take your advice to.
No, no, we don't, you don't have to get another survey, if you have a brand-new survey. All you have to do is show it, is 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 give us that, you gave us this old survey that shows that you're in a flood zone.
Okay, but it had to be post-two thousand thirteen, Madam Chair, because.
Right, well, he says he just did it.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I said, I visited us, Stephen Formica. And at his office, he checked with FEMA and he find out S I G, S G I. For me, I print out at your basement office. And although you say that that was the state uh, map, right now, all I need to find out for the federal map, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yes. The G I, the G I S that you got from Town Hall would not have the proper FEMA flood zones indicated. You can get, you can get that online through the FEMA website.
Mm-hmm, there's a map, what you were looking at, that Patrick showed you in the beginning, there's a map online and it'll show you, but it's very hard. You'll, you'll, you'll figure it out how to use it, but it's, there's a mapping.
Yeah, it's, it's a little more nuanced than that, Madam Chair, it's the the data that you need, only a surveyor can plot it on your parcel.
Okay, so he needs a new survey.
Beautiful. Need a survey, well, or if there's one that exists, maybe the title somewhere that was post-two thousand thirteen would be the next best thing.
Okay, so, I may add, one more thing here is I can go ahead to, for the engineer survey to make sure that. The F, the FEMA information will be update on my new survey. Second thing is, your office tell me say today's, one of today's purpose. Also want to like to clarify my parking possibility.
Okay, on the parking, um, it really, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Tan, a couple of things with your parking. One, the two spaces, the spaces that you're actually showing, that back out onto the street. May not be possible because there is a telephone pole right there. Uh, that's an encumbrance and the, I'm sure the utilities will be loathe to move that for you.
Yes.
Also, you're backing out onto Prospect Street. Uh, the Highway Division may frown on that as Prospect Street may be classified. As a feeder street or feeder thoroughfare. Uh, to that, actually, having a parking that backs onto the street would be prohibited, that's something that's actually very important.
That you, so you, so what Mr. Macrae is saying is it, you you may not be able to do, the Department of Public Works may not let you do that backing out parking.
Uh, so what's your suggestion then? I did have some research on my neighbor and if you, if you have minute, I can show you the, the some of their solution. And maybe as can be a reference for the.
Start, what I would suggest to you, I'm sorry for interrupting you, Mr. Tan, what I would suggest. Is first, get the survey.
Okay.
And find out whether or not you're in a flood zone, in a federal flood zone, first do that. Then, once you have that answer, go to our office during desk hours and talk to them. Is that a good way to approach it for them to do the the parking? Or do you want them to, do you want him to just talk to you, Patrick or Tracy?
Well, I think, I think you could always come to our office and ask a question, I think there is, needs to be a discussion with the Highway Division. About their criteria for entrances and and I fully understand that there may be other lots on the on the street that have similar setup. But they may have different conditions or different circumstances of why they were permitted and and you may, you may be allowed, you may not be. But the commission has their subjective decision about whether that's the best use of the street frontage. And then there's also the safety and the design factor that engineering has to do, so both of them need to meet. You know, meet, meet both criteria for for you to do that, so.
So can you tell me who is the person I can contact to get a parking clarification? Before I spend several thousand for survey, that's why, that's why our penny and zoning department tell me to overhaul my survey. And I already have engineer wait standby for the survey, but they say that it's best for me to clarify parking possibility first. So Patrick, will you do me a favor? Tell me who is the person I can contact, I can bring my material to to get the parking issue solved before I do the survey. I would like to do the survey right after that, if possible.
I don't know the answer of the individual who's gonna give you that que- that the the answer, but it's the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works.
I saw that today's committee will give me some kind of suggestion, what, whether my parking is doable, that's the one of the.
Well, I think, I think you're hearing that.
We don't have enough information.
D P W criteria being met for them before they would consider the parking. As of right now, I think the answer is no, if it doesn't meet the design standards of D P W. I, I, the commission's about.
So we need to hear from the people who decide if you're allowed to back out onto the street, I, you know, that's the problem. So we need to hear from them, because we can't decide if we know that, unless we know that.
Okay, okay, so, and I will, if possible, Patrick, will tell me who is the direct person I can contact? Or I will call Highway Department to get who I will contact to get that first. And after that, I would asking for the engineer to the survey.
And you can't build the connection between the two buildings unless you get a variance anyway. You can't, you're not gonna be able to do it, so all those pieces have to go forward.
Okay, so.
Okay.
What can?
Uh, who is the person I can set up or asking for variant?
Well, you have to, Patrick will help you with that, you have to put in an application for that.
All right.
Okay. All right, before you go away, Mr. Tan, I'm just gonna ask if anybody from the public is, would like to comment on your application. This is Thirty-three Prospect Street, does anybody wish to comment? No comments from the public. Mr. LaRoe, and then does anybody else in the commission?
It's the zoning enforcement office, and it's gonna help you with the applications for the variants, sorry, it's not me directly, but.
So it would be Steve Formica again?
Uh, yeah, correct, actually, yeah, Jody Couture is the Z E O, talk to him directly.
Hmm, Steve Formica has already helped him?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so he knows Steve. Anybody's good, all of, all of those people are very good, so you could talk to Steve Formica or you could go to Jody, but you know Steve now. Uh, and does anybody on the commission have any comments on this application?
I'm just thinking out loud, if you're going for a variance, it's a variance of what and what's the hardship?
It's the setbacks.
What's the hardship?
I don't know.
There you go.
It's not my job. I mean, you know, he's gotta get one because he can't connect the buildings anyway, so he has to go and he's gotta say, look, I want to rationalize this building. This is the way it's it's been and I want to connect it and see what the Z B A does with it.
I have a question for staff, does a three-car tandem work? I've seen two-car tandems approved, but in his plans, it showed three cars in tandem.
Sure, I'm sure there are probably instances where that has been installed and and prior approvals, but I can't think of anything recently. Typically, the problem is that you have two cars and one in the middle, it's hard to see that car moving in and out. You know, you you could have the cars on the outside backing out at the same time and creating problems, so it's it's typically not. Approved that way, however, there may be designs that could be done that may be more, you know, I'm not a traffic designer, unfortunately, so I don't know if there's a better solution, but.
Follow-up question, obviously, you can't build on a flood zone or floodway. Can you park cars on a floodway?
Yes, you can, you can, anything else, and you can't build, so again, if you had a driveway, those are acceptable things. Site work in the floodway is gonna require a analysis by an engineer that's very significant to to determine that there isn't any impact to the upstream flooding, so.
Because you can't, you can't make it impervious.
Right, so.
Gravel driveway.
Right, so gravel driveway may be something, but even that, it it, you know, there's gonna be an analysis that's needed with that from an engineer. Um, and I'm just telling everybody who's listening, it's a substantial one, so it's not, not a typical drainage plan and analysis for site development, it goes. Me on that.
What, Mr. Mr. Tan, just so you know, what we're telling you is because of the, of the, the engineer survey is so important because of the flooding issues. Because of your property being in a flood zone, that is such a big question, because it's gonna make, the answer to that is whether or not your whole idea is too complicated to do or not. Because of the flood zone, okay?
Okay, so, uh, uh, I probably, at the beginning, I I did visit the zoning enforcement. I saw the S G I map, so was solve the problem and also respectfully clarify with the inland. Uh, 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 weather office, they also tell me, they have emails send me say, I have a certain, how many feet setback from the.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, flood zone.
And you're far, you're, you're great for that, you're far enough. And you're far, you're what you're great for that. You're far enough back from what we call from a wetland.
Right.
But then on top of that, there's the federal, the federal government does. So again, we're here. If you've got more questions, um Steve Formica can help you some more. You know the key words. You know what you need to ask about. And it it may be a lot of work. We're just telling you.
Okay, so I I I will taking care one at a time.
Yeah.
Uh highway first for the parking uh possibility, then uh uh I at the same time, I will probably uh do the survey after that and apply for variant.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under concern.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, oh, you've got to do it, Pat. All right. Alrighty, okay, so uh we now come to our first application, our first application application. Okay, just let me ask sixty-five. Let's try to get the wood dinner after that one. And then we go to the public hearing. Okay, so the first application is for Chasmar Road for a final subdivision to demolish the existing house and subdivide two lots, an eighteen thousand eight twenty-one property into two lots. Speaking for the the applicant is Mr. Hegney. And Mr. Hegney, would you proceed? I guess the big question is, were you able to get everything today from DPW? I didn't see anything.
And the answer to your question, Madam Chair, is yes.
Okay.
Uh uh town engineer Juan Paredes uh sent a email to uh Mr. LaRoe and with his staff report which indicated approved for subdivision. Uh and that was based on us providing the sightlines and certifying them uh with an as-built plan which Mr. DeAndrea uh did last week. And Mr. Paredes was on vacation until this week, so didn't get a chance to see it till now.
Okay.
Uh there was one other question that came up at the briefing yesterday, and that was on uh the uh conservation comments. One was, you know, how are these lots going to be developed separately? No. There is uh one builder that's going to develop them together. Uh asked about uh landscape plan. Uh when we went through wetlands, we received wetland approval last year for this. Uh Matt Pop prepared a landscape plan for the wetland application, and he'll continue to do that for the uh uh sign off uh from your staff to go for the zoning and building permits. So um what we would propose is that we submit a landscape plan to you for each lot as part of the zoning permit sign-off process
And you would be
the subdivision.
And you would be admin review for those.
Yes.
Um, Mr. LaRoe, can you just confirm? I didn't see um the DPW sign-off, so I
He came in around
I can't trust Mr. Hegney.
I I agree, Madam Chair, and uh Ouch.
But it came in?
It came in around uh two fifteen-ish, I think. It was right before I I changed venues before uh meetings.
Okay. All right, okay, so everything that was um outstanding on it uh has been addressed. You I know, I think they signed the the DPW acknowledgement.
We we did that at the last hearing, Madam Chair.
And did we have any other questions that were outstanding on this?
Uh as I see it, we've got zoning, engineering now, conservation, sewer, tree warden, wetlands. I think we're good to go.
Yeah, the only, yeah, go ahead.
Tree Warden was talking about actually it's two street trees, but he's kind of blessed that. And every other condition of the most other conditions of the uh departments have been addressed.
Okay, question. Um the conserva- conservation was really never totally happy. Um but one of their questions was around drainage, and that's as long as DPW is okay, we normally go with that. Uh because uh Mr. Paredes has reviewed it. And Tree Warden did approve it. Uh does anybody have anything else? Okay, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Might be your night, Mr. Hegney. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Hearing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Therefore, would anybody like to make a motion regarding this application?
Not I.
I'll I'll do it.
Please don't trample over each other. Thank you.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. MacRae, since you volunteered.
Hey, uh for Chasmar Road, PLPC twenty twenty-three, one two uh two-two, final subdivision. Applicant seeking to subdivide eighteen thousand eight hundred square foot property to uh one seven, seven thousand five hundred fifty and one eight thousand four hundred forty-six square foot lot um in a two thousand eight hundred twenty-five square foot open space area in the R seven AE and X flood zones, which is kind of interesting. Um let's see, the commission finds that uh the application is a re-subdivision. Uh zoning issue comments on five seventeen twenty-three indicating proposal meets the current to the BZR. Engineering issue comments on seven eighteen twenty-three indicating approval for subdivision with conditions. Sewer division issued comments on um I think it was three seventeen twenty-three requesting applicant submit a sign letter acknowledging receipt of the P and Z comments. Um and wetlands issued permit number twenty twenty-three zero zero two on uh January twenty-fourth twenty-two. And conservation issue comments on six twenty-three twenty-three indicating recommendations. And the tree warden has approved removal of two street free trees. Uh therefore, motion approve the application noting the following. The fa- final site development plans for both lots shall be reviewed by planning and zoning staff prior to permitting. Uh the final landscape plans for both lots shall be reviewed, uh both lots and open space shall be reviewed by planning and zoning and wetlands staff prior to permitting. Uh sewer division comment, uh the applicant is uh submitted an email memo acknowledging sewer conditions uh dated seven six twenty-three. Uh the applicant should prepare a record sheet, a form of suitable for the chairman of planning and zoning commission to sign and file with the Grand Shaolin Records. And the applicant shall address uh any and all outstanding interdepartmental issues.
Um, do you have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Me. I think
Alrighty, Mr. Wells has seconded.
I'm here to seated on this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, seated on this is Albin, MacRae, Wells, and Jenkins.
I'm I'm not on this?
And Lo, my apologies. No, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. You're seated. Albin, MacRae, Yesski, well, no, not Yesski, Wells, Jenkins, and Lo. Uh question, it's in the AE, why?
It's stream. There's a stream in the open space.
Stream, yeah. I just hadn't focused on the fact that it was in the AE this whole time. Isn't that weird?
It's sometimes they get up kind of, Benny Park is really close by.
I see. I'm looking at the at Google Earth, and it's really close by. And for some reason, I see that that I'm I was guessing that was the whole low-lying area. I just never focused on it, and I'm such a, I'm always looking at that. Okay, we have a second.
Um, just I want to make sure, actually, with the landscape plan, our staff and because it was actually a wetlands thing.
Consistent with the wetlands, with the wetlands permit.
Yeah.
Approval.
So it's consistent with that, us and us and them, so.
And there's also that language, and I'm just, it's boilerplate language that goes in the in about the setback. You know, the no development that that has to go in the notes.
Yeah, the standard notes, standard notes.
Including the standard notes. And then, did you want to add that the lots shall be developed separately? Just say that the head that the applicant has advised that the lots will be developed separately?
Can do.
Okay, all right. With that, Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Okay, now do you guys want to go have dinner now, or do you want to do Glenville?
I'm thinking we go, I I will sus- suggest that we do one more and then break. I'm prepared to be disabused of that.
Do I have a second?
Uh I do, second.
Alrighty. All right, I was like, I'm getting hungry. Okay.
They're making me hungry.
Mr. Bazili, raise your hand, please. There he goes. All right, Mr. Bazili, sound check.
Your sound is very good.
And yours as well, sir. Alrighty, with that, we open the public hearing. First item on our public hearing agenda is nine Glenville Street LLC for a final site plan and special permit uh to demolish the existing structures and build a residential building. Which is now proposed to be all residential. And Marshall Carroll has raised his hand. Is that who's speaking for the applicant, Mr. Hegney? Are you with Mr. Carroll?
Uh, no.
All right, well, that's probably a member of the public who wants to speak, so.
Ridberg is uh in attendance and
Oh, Mr. Ridberg, I'm sure people will want to hear from you. Could you raise your hand, sir?
I got it, Madam Chair.
Okay, um Mr. Carroll, if you're a member of the member of the public, uh Mr. Hegney's going to present the commissioner's questions, and then we'll turn to the public for comment. Mr. Hegney, if you would kindly proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh members of the commission, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Uh we were at your meeting on June twenty-first, presented a building uh that was mixed-use or is mixed-use uh with retail on the first floor and uh apartments on the second and third floors. It was eight apartments with uh the uh little over four thousand square feet of retail on the first floor. It we had ten parking spaces in the uh basement or lower level. Uh and then twenty-three parking spaces on site with two additional handicap parking spaces. Uh the discussion we had was whether uh we would consider uh a residential only use rather than a mixed-use building. Uh and we went over this with our client. Uh Mr. Ridberg uh did a number of sketches over the last month and uh put together what we are would like to share with you uh this evening. Uh this alternate plan shows a four one-bedroom apartments, nine two-bedroom apartments. Rather than having retail on the first floor, we have three two-bedroom apartments on the first floor. Uh by having thirteen apartments total, uh this increases the moderate-income dwelling count from one to two. We would propose to have one one bedroom as a moderate-income dwelling and one two-bedroom uh as moderate-income dwelling. We also looked at the parking count, and I did listen in on the uh briefing session yesterday. I I counted a little differently than you were doing it yesterday. Uh because what the regulations to the six one ten say is that uh for a one-bedroom apartment, you need one parking space. So that's easy. There are four one-bedrooms, that's four spaces. Uh for two bedrooms, it's one point two five parking spaces per bedroom, not per unit. And so what that ends up being is twenty-two and a half or twenty-three spaces. So you end up with a total of twenty-seven parking spaces required plus two handicap. Uh so that's a little less than what we have uh as part of our initial plan, uh but not an awful lot less. So we uh looked at whether we could move the driveway. Uh there is a significant issue uh on Angeles Drive because there is a gas regulator installation right on the side of Angeles Road, on the west side of Angeles Road. We met with uh Connecticut Natural Gas out at the site uh to discuss moving that uh to a different location. Uh that is something that they say they cannot do. Uh so we have to work around that, which really dictates the driveways uh one under the into the garage uh on the south side, and then another uh to the rest of the site uh north of this like gas uh regulator installation. Uh Mr. Ridberg, if uh if he could go through the uh plans with you and and how he's developed these. Uh and then uh and then we're looking uh for your uh your thoughts and reactions to this. Uh so we can decide whether we're going to pursue this or uh the plan that we originally submitted. So Rudy, if you could go through and uh Pat or or Tracy if we could pull up the presentation material that we submitted. I guess just go to the next sheet. Go ahead, Rudy.
Thanks, Tom. For the record, Rudy Ridberg, Ridberg Architects for the applicant. There should be three sheets that we did develop. I wish, Tom, we did have a month since our last hearing, but it wasn't that much, but thanks for giving you that much time, but
You you did a month's worth of work in that time.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, but we let's go to the uh floor plans first. If you go down one more, if you don't mind. This is the first floor that is the commercial, was the commercial use. Essentially, we've kept the building the same footprint. Um we did add some additional FAR, which we had available, about three hundred and sixty square feet or so. Uh if if one were to remember on the right side of that drawing, which is the Angeles side, uh uh Angeles Drive side. We we had a walkway that was for the commercial space. We've enclosed that walkway and have included it into the into the residential uh units on the first floor. So we picked up that three hundred and forty square feet, and I think we had another twenty or thirty that we squeezed into the uh into the hallway at the back under the building. So here we have two uh uh three uh three two-bedroom units. And they are basically uh uh one that's front to back on the right side there, Angeles Drive. We have one that's on the left side against the liquor store, and then there's one tucked in the middle. Um what ends up happening in this scheme is we now have to go to two uh interior, two stairs in the building, exit stairs, where before uh we only had to have one throughout the building because it was four units, which we are allowed to have one stair for. So we had to relay out the building to include two stairs. And we maintained the, we basically maintained the elevator where it was. And that um uh the stair to the right of that elevator will be the one that will go down and feed to the uh basement parking garage. The other one will will exit onto the first floor and exit out through the uh side door to the left of the elevator. So there's three two-bedroom units there, where before there was about forty four hundred square feet of of commercial. Um if we could go up one, uh down one more, we'll see the upper floors. Okay, so there we have, uh this is the second floor. And here we have three two-bedrooms and and two one-bedrooms. Uh to for a total of five. So again, now with five, we had to recreate the two exit stairs. They need to be remote by building code, so that all works. Elevator stays where it is. And this this portion of the the top of the sheet, the northerly portion uh extends over the first floor that has the parking below. So we we're before we had four apartments, now we have five, but there are two but two two-bedrooms. Both two of them are on the uh three two-bed, I'm sorry, there's two on the left side. Again, that's the liquor store side. The one on the right is the Angeles Drive side, and then in the middle are two one-bedroom apartments. We'll tweak them a little bit as we develop the the plans and the elevations further, uh if we decide to go with this scheme. You can go down to the next slide, which will be similar. Uh same layout. And uh that's, so there's five units there. If you can slide one more, and that's the that's the third floor. And so it's essentially the same, total of five units, three two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms. Just for a quick, for a note on the comments that were made in the briefing, uh the rooftop stays the same that was there before. Basically, we want to have that as a as an enjoyment of the neighbor or the neighbors, the the Basically, we want to have that as an enjoyment of the neighbor, of the neighbors, the tenants of the building to have rooftop terrace. In the briefing report, it mentioned it was 135 square feet of roof deck. That's just the area of the, of the FAR that's on the second floor for the elevator, for the stair coming up onto the roof. We have 750 square feet of roof deck up there, which we only have one stair going up right now. If we brought up the second stair, we could have more area, but right now, we're only showing one stair to the roof. And those, both the elevator and the stair, will meet the setback requirements of the height exceptions for the, for that zone. So if you could go back to the top of the sheets, one, sheet one. We did a quick, quick study here of the building where before we had a brick building early on, then we went to HTC, and it was part brick, part shingle. We've now changed this to, at least at this stage, a, you know, all shingle with a very small brick base at the building, which, which, I don't know, is a little bit homage to the brick in the neighborhood, but it's more for protection of of ground against, you know, water and debris hitting the lower portion of the building. So we basically, I know in the last meeting, I think it was Mr. McRae that mentioned about the middle building, the two dormers that we have tucked out. I did look at trying to make one large dormer across there, just, in my opinion, it didn't work. I still think this works very well. Still gives the rooftop architecture to what we had in the original rendering. Basically, the windows here read pretty much what's similar to what was in our earlier renderings, which we haven't had time to have the renderer update, but we would have the, where we show these balconies. If we go that route, I know they don't show on the floor plan at this time, but we could have some shallow balconies on the, on the street side of the building. There would be some sliding doors there, so those tenants up top would be able to take advantage of some balconies. We show something on the right, we need to look into all of that a little bit more, where we would get balconies, but if we can't get them, we'll, we'll use the roof deck for outside enjoyment. So I think that's basically what our changes are. We feel it's more residential in scale, which I think that was also comments people made instead of the commercial entity on the first floor.
Commission?
I'd say, have questions.
Comments from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Rob, Tracy, could you go to slide number six, please? Mr. Hegney, I just want to make sure I completely understood what we were talking about the last time, because I'm missing it completely now. As I understand, we had talked about two floors of residential, so we could reduce the number of parking spaces, so we'd have less cut in the back of the site, so we wouldn't have a 16-foot-high retaining wall. That's where I thought we were going. Yeah, so three, three floors of residential, we only, we're losing a little bit of parking. Maybe it's the garage that gets lost, I'm not too sure, but still, it's the retaining wall on the back that's still there. Did I miss something, or was, you know, were we not clear? I'm not too sure how, how we got to here.
I heard a number of things at the last meeting. I did hear one comment about having two floors. That is not something that my client is willing to consider as part of this development. He thought that the main concern that was expressed by the neighborhood was traffic associated with the retail use, and so when we went back and looked at what was viable for this site, we were looking at converting that retail use to the three two-bedroom apartments on the first floor. And as I said earlier, I don't think it reduces the parking requirement all that much. I know it's, it's 20 spaces, 27 spaces to to 30 that we would have with the, with the retail, just because of the way the regulations are written. But right now, the, we're looking at, if it's three stories, 13 apartments, is something that the commission thinks we should pursue. We're certainly happy to do that, our client is, and if not, we'll, we'll probably stick with the other plan.
Folks?
So it's, it was the two-story, three stories of residential, but first floor in the LVR. You, we still need a variance to do that as a use.
Or the commission could change the regulations to permit that.
Yep.
So I run off and change the regulations, and then you come back in, in six months when I do it?
No.
I was thinking September myself, but.
There's a big gap in there, it's called August, but yes, I understand where you're going, okay.
Well, it's not a huge change, and they could submit it to us. I mean, but the question is, and this is what we discussed last time, does all residential in a business zone make sense as a 6110? And there is some planning theory that it does, so it's something to consider. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McRae.
It's interesting, because actually, whether, whether it's, the, the, the one point is, you know, residential will have maybe less cars moving in and out. Retail, we would have possibly more cars moving in and out, but the site never change, never changes. We still have a garage, we have two engines, those kind of things, so to me, if I'm looking at this, one of the big outstanding things is actually the traffic studies were done at off times. I'd like to really know, other than any good old, little information, what the traffic is like. Because I think actually, to me, if we're looking at this site not changing, I would have preferred actually the two floors of residential and the retail on the first floor, and the original design of the building.
But you still would want it all covered?
No, no, the original design of the building.
You want the mixed media that, I thought you didn't like that the last time.
No, I had, to me, to my druthers, I think the only big issue for me was the eve line, the multiple different roof levels.
Who was the person who said to Mr. Ridberg that they wanted it all covered?
That could have been Mr. Levy.
Oh, maybe, okay, alright, so you.
It was that, to me, the big nut was the connection between the the wood materials up above and the brick below, but I think you kind of resolved it in a detail shown on this version. Could do the same thing, but it's, I think if we're doing three floors, I think one of them should be retail.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
Yeah, I have to say that I, I really, I appreciate the increase in the residential capacity because the housing issue, especially the 6110 housing issue is, is so critical. And there, I know there was concern about the retail vacancy in the area. So I guess I would rather have the apartments on the ground floor than vacant retail.
I'd like, I'd like to add to that, and having gone through the experience of my son looking for a rattle in town, which is, you know, almost impossible at any reasonable price, but I think there's a much bigger need for additional residents than there are for retail, so I I would lean, if there was a gun to my head and said, you got to have a three-story, you know, you have to accept a three-story building, I'd much rather have it all residential than mixed use.
Anybody else? Kind of need people to weigh in, because that's what they're looking for.
No, no strong feeling here. I would say that if there if we had the crystal ball and we could determine that there was sufficient demand for the retail and rationale for it, I'm not against it, but I don't disagree with what Commissioner Jenkins said and Commissioner Wells. How's that for a commitment?
Yeah, Mr., I'm sure Mr. Baralek will be. Mr. Baralek, go ahead.
I, I, I agree with Marion, I'd much prefer to have residential.
I got, my screen got frozen, did anyone else's?
No.
Okay, I didn't hear what was said, but that's fine.
Oh, Mr. Baralek said he's with, he's, he's with Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Wells. Okay. I also had the idea that the neighbors preferred a residential, but I'm kind of in Mr. Lowe's camp. I could go either way, but I think the leaning of enough people on the commission is to go with all residential. Mr. Lowe and I could be influenced. Ms. Jenkins, do you want to further comment?
I would like to submit that I will speak for myself, and I might change my mind. So there.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the issue about traffic, though, I guess we, we still, there's some question about whether the traffic numbers are meaningful, but I would have to say that you're going to have, you're replacing one house with a three-story building, so you're going to have impact on traffic increasing regardless, so I wish the traffic numbers were were perhaps more accurate or reflected in school, school time. But I think you're going to have increased traffic, no matter what you put there, if you've got three stories of a building.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lowe, you're, you're.
Have we mitigated or resolved the, the whole notion of the blasting and the and the conservation comments associated with carving out this, out of this enormous.
Well, I, I, so I, I got, Mr. Hegney, I'm sorry, in part answer to Mr. Lowe, can you cite where it says the 2.6 spaces for a two-bedroom? Or the, what you.
It's, it's in 6110.
It refers you back to 6155?
No, it has a separate.
Do I have an old? Wait, wait, okay, I have an old version of 6110 in my book then, right?
It is, has not been codified into the zoning regulations yet.
Sorry for the bad language, folks, but, so I have been thinking that you were, so I, all I kept reading in 6110 is it shall comply with 6155. Right, okay, and I thought that.
What I have in, it's E, section E.
Okay.
Three.
I had forgot.
A and B, it says dwellings with two bedrooms, 1.25 parking spaces per bedroom.
So it brings you to two and a half.
For one bedrooms, it's one parking space per bedroom. And if you go to three bedrooms, then it's 1.5 parking spaces per bedroom.
And that, folks, in my book, is way too much parking. I don't know how we did that. I mean, we must have been thinking differently, yet, Madam Kulikowski. And I feel like I'm schizophrenic or something, that I don't remember this.
You're not the only one.
It is bedroom, and I didn't miss that when I did my quick analysis of it.
Yeah, but.
Per dwelling unit.
But more embarrassing.
But it's not 6155, it's this section.
Yeah, no, but the old reg is what's in my book, and it says, it says multifamily dwellings shall comply with the requirements of 6155. We obviously changed that. I have no memory of it, and I'm embarrassed, because normally I go, oh, yeah, 2,000 whatever. Okay, Mr. Wells, so I'm struggling with how much parking we require, although I realize there's not enough there. Mr. Wells, go ahead.
No, I'd certainly be amenable to reducing the parking requirement. I mean, it does seem you know, excessive. A two-bedroom apartment is going to require like two cars. I mean, normally, you know, it's probably going to be husband, wife, couple of kids. Do you really need two cars? I don't think so.
Going to be, you know.
I'd stick with one.
You're most often going to be a couple with a, with a guest room, two bedrooms, a couple with a baby.
Yeah.
Two parking, I mean, you keep coming back to, I can understand why the, the requirement of mixed use, of only having one parking space may be low. Mr. Baralek, if you refresh my memory, when we talked on housing, we tend to say, on the affordable housing, we tend to say one and a half apart, one and a half parking spaces for a multifamily building, right?
This is, this is, this is, this is not really affordable at that level, this is, this is.
No, just in general, number of parks.
I, I, personally, from my experience, I don't think that this parking requirement we're talking about is excessive for this building.
You don't think it's excess, excessive?
Do not, because you have to keep in mind that, that on any given day, quite a number of those people are going to have guests come visit them. I, I don't think, I don't think that the parking's excessive. It'd be a little, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut it dramatically.
No, I think we were talking about maybe, but it's, you don't have to cut it dramatically to get to save that ledge, right, Mr. Ridberg? If you had two spaces for a two-bedroom?
Two spaces for a two-bedroom total?
Yeah, do my, yeah, and one space for a one-bedroom. How much, how many parking spaces do you need? Because I'm not fast at this.
That would be 22.
22.
Nice job. 22, so you do have a one-third cut in the parking.
Actually, I think the parking requirements for even a one-bedroom or two-spaces and for a two-bedroom or two-spaces, so that totals 26, which is not far from the 27 that is in the computation in 6110.
With, with all due respect, I think what we need to be talking about is what the material impact is going to be on this, the amount of ledge that needs to be removed. We can talk about parking spaces all we want, and I know.
No, no, the problem is, that's exactly what I'm trying to get to, is how many spaces do you reduce it by, and do you do the ledge, and then you have to stop and ask yourself, we can't make a regulation just for one application, it has to make general sense. So if, does it make general sense, and that's why Bob's got a lot of experience in multifamily development, does it make general sense to have a lower parking requirement, and he's saying, I believe, I heard you say you have a fairly affluent rental clientele, if there's two adults in an apartment, they're probably both going to have cars.
And I, I, I not only agree with that, but I, I think that we run the risk, when we reduce the parking requirement, we run the risk of pushing all these things out onto the street and causing more problems than we need. I, so I, that makes sense to me what Bob said.
Haven't we just been lecturing everybody that they need to put their cars on their property now? So then the question is, back to you, Peter Lowe, we're not going to be able to do anything to protect the ledge. We just are saying, hey, cool, that's, we like the idea that it's all residential, but if we want to go forward with this, and we like this application in general, it's a special permit, can we get, you know, what do we do about protecting the ledge?
I brought it up, I brought it up because I somehow thought that that discussion got, kind of got tossed aside.
No, no, the whole reason we're trying to reduce the parking is to get to the ledge. We're not putting it aside, it was, it was what was driving the.
We have to, you have to make it relative to the degree of reduction in ledge, and I, and I haven't heard anybody say, well, if we reduce, you know, down, you take away four parking spaces, we save a third of the ledge. I haven't heard any of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, Mr. Ridberg can comment on it, but we were kind of of the mind that if you start out with requiring 36 spaces, and you get it down to 15 or 16, you'd be really cool. And you would accommodate under the, under the building, and you wouldn't have to remove the ledge. That's what we started out thinking.
Right.
It was driving our conversation, and that could be wrong, because I was just making that up. Don't tell anyone.
But you got, you know, to Bob's point, that you may have young people moving in, and they've got a roommate, and they both need transportation, they both want cars, you know. All of what we're talking about.
So we're in this funny place here, because I can't poll you guys, except you're being given a choice between all residential and a mixed use, and the, the people, there are more people leaning. there are more people leaning strongly towards residential, all residential. And what I'm hearing is if we do that, we're, we're kind of thinking the parking number may be okay. I don't want to poll people, but the question is, do you have any guidance about the ledge as a result? No, okay.
It's, it's.
I might ask, I might ask, and, and their represent, or their representatives here to weigh in on this issue specifically with regard to whether or not this discussion about trying to reduce the parking by not a whole lot is going to have any material impact in, in the reduction of a ledge.
That's what Mr. Ridberg was nodding. Go ahead, Mr. Ridberg, put yourself on the record.
No, I, I, I agree that actually you're not even taking visitors into, into account here. The Angeles people were, were upset about people parking on the road. I think the extra couple of spaces are worth the effort for, for, uh, for, um, for parking. And I think in this case that two spaces per, per unit makes sense. I understand when you have a commercial entity, you normally get a lot more parking spaces. So I, I would say that the, the couple of spaces that you would get rid of would be, yeah, it would take a little bit maybe away, but I'm not sure it's, it's enough to make an impact.
Right.
All right. And so then the next question. So that I, you know, I, you can't make a decision now, but it's, you got to think about the fact that we, if we wanted to move forward with this, we would not be able to do much with the ledge based on the design. And then the next question is, what guidance do you want to give Mr. Ridberg about the facade of the building? How do you want it to look? Okay, so Nick, Nick Wentzall-Breck.
No, I, I, my opinion was brick on the, brick on the first floor.
Oh, that's.
Wood on the upper floors and simplify the eve line. That's.
But now you're, even in an all-residential, Nick?
Even all-residential.
Because that conforms to other buildings in the area?
It's actually, I, uh, Mr. Ridberg did get the brick foundation. But I, as I see most of Glenville, it's a predominantly brick material, except for the mansion across the street. This is going to be a similar size, probably. So I would think actually having a little bit of brick may reduce some of that perceived site, size and give it a little bit of a push into the brick, brick idea, the bricks, uh, motif in, uh, Glenville.
Okay, I don't have strong feel, I, I'm never comfortable commenting on, on these kinds of issues, on the aesthetic kind of issues. And I'm getting the feeling that the commission is not got a strong feeling. Mr. Ridberg, where do you come out?
Well, we had, we did several, several presentations to HTC and that was their goal at the end to, we had, so we ended up at the last building with brick on the first floor and, and the shingle and the panels up top. I like that fact. I think the three-story all shingle, while it's nice, I still prefer the one with the brick on the first floor. We're going to bring up brick from the Angeles Drive garage and we have columns in the back. I don't want to put Clappard siding on columns in the back. We leave it all brick and then follow it up nicely with the shingle above. And HTC liked that. It's in their record.
I defer to the professionals.
All right. Does anybody else have a strong feeling for guidance? No, okay. I'm hearing lots of silence. Okay. So we're going to go with Mr. Ridberg and Mr. McCray. And we're going to give you the guidance to go with all residential and I don't think we can say much about the ledge at this point. It's a tough, you know, we hate to do it. You, I don't know if you were listening when we did Central Middle earlier. Same kind of thing. They've got that huge rock outcropping. Y'all didn't, your kids didn't go to school around there, but you know, for the rest of us, it's kind of a landmark as well. All right. Um, any objection if I turn to cup for public comment, Mr. Hegney?
Uh, no, please, Madam Chair, we would appreciate hearing that.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the application at nine Glenville? Please raise your virtual hands. Uh, the first person that has a hand up is Marshall Carroll. And nobody else seems to have been aware or be in town. All right, Mr. Carroll will be speaking. Anyone else who wishes to speak on nine Glenville? Mr. Carroll, if you would unmute?
How's that?
That's good.
Okay. I don't know why the video is not working. Wow, you guys have done a lot of work since the last meeting. There was rationale with the first proposal to putting the building essentially on the street with no setbacks, and that was the retail component. If you want to go all residential, it's crazy. It will overpower the entire neighborhood. So I have a proposed solution that you're here to consider that will not only make the apartments a lot more attractive, will also save the ledge. And the answer is put the building up on top of the mountain. Put the deck in front of it. You don't have to carve out the, the, the rock at all. Okay, you can build a deck for parking and cover it with another deck. You can even put in a swimming pool. It will be gorgeous. You'll have 360-degree views from the top two floors. You will sell it out in a heartbeat. Who wants to live right on Glenville Street? I didn't think, you know, the stores are going to be financially viable either. But I think it's crazy to put a three-story apartment building right on the road. It's totally out of character for the neighborhood and there are better solutions. If, if you go back and look at your slide six, what I'm suggesting is you, you, you put the building at the back of the lot on top of the ledge and you build two decks underneath it, one for parking and one for amenities. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carroll. Uh, Mr., I'm going to just not ask Mr. Hegney, Mr. Ridberg, would you like to comment on that?
I, I don't see how we'd get up there. We'd have to go up all the way up Angeles Drive to get to the top of the hill to go through the guy's property that's up there. We, the roads don't meet at the elevations they're at. Also, um, I, 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 I just think the, the scale of the building, it's a streetscape. I think you want to have the streets, the buildings along the left side, the liquor store, Glenville Deli, uh, and so on are more free, street oriented. I know in many times I've been to ARC, ARC has always been advocate of, of streetscapes to maintain them and, um, you know, I think that's the way to go. If I can make two, one, one or two other quick comments though, one is the retail, everybody keeps saying that the retail is, is not active. I, I'm doing Glenville post office old building. There's four stores we put in there. We were held up waiting for over a year with EverSource to get their electrical into the building. It's now there. There are two confirmed leases. There's a third lease under the, under the way right now. That store, that four stores will be leased very shortly. So I don't think that the retail is, is a problem there, especially here when you have parking. Retail's tend to have problems when there's not parking. Here we will have the parking. So I think that scale of a building on top of the hill up there, there's a house up there, back further. But to put the building on top of that up there, this would be well out of scale. And, and you don't have any, uh, area left over to, to provide the amenities for parking. I think what we've designed is, is the correct way to go for this site with the development that we're, we're referencing.
But you would prefer to have it be mixed use?
Uh, that's really, I, I like the mixed use opportunity because I think we can handle the retail. Uh, the owner is, is okay with having either or, trying to do it from a financial standpoint. I like the idea of the retail there. And, um, I, I think, I, I think it would work well.
Yeah, I, I, I do, I do believe that given, um, Ms. Jenkins and, and Mr. Wells made a very good point though. We are in need of more housing options. So more apartments is probably, I think from a P O C D point of view, is better. Uh, and I do agree with them on, on that. I, I wanted to do what was right for Glenville itself, business-wise and commercially in terms of Glenville thriving, but at the same time, every downsizer I talk to has nowhere to go and wants to stay in town.
Well, right now there's one or two families in that, in the, in the white Victorian. We're now adding, uh, six more units already and an affordable. So to me, that's a game right there and you still, it's a good mix between the two uses. We provide the parking. We have a garage for everybody to park in. Uh, you know, the, each of the apartments gets one space in the garage, which is great. And then the remaining spaces are, would be out on the lot when they're, you know, if they have a second car. So I think it's a win-win.
To do all residential?
No, to retail too. I mean, I could, the re, either way, we have parking for eight units. And down below, we won't have, we, we have 13 units. We won't fit them all in the basement, in the garage. So not everybody would have a garage space, so that they'd have to fight over, but, uh, uh, I think, you know, look at the weather you have. When you, when you do have inclement weather, it's nice to be able to park your car in a garage.
Absolutely, absolutely. But at the same time, you know, I keep talking to people and they don't have anywhere to move to and they want to stay in town. They want to have a place that's an apartment and there's just not enough options. And this is a good location. You're walkable to stuff. It'll be interesting to see what happens with a, with a supermarket locale. That's the other big question. Um, okay, I think we've given the guidance, all residential, the mixed, what I call mixed media on the facade. And, uh, we're going to leave the parking be for now. Uh, the parking requirement because we're really not going to be able to save the ledge by doing it. And we just have the question of when we make a final decision, uh, we're going to have to decide, we're going to have to weigh the factor of the ledge versus, uh, the prioritization of creating more housing options. Okay.
So do we have to go for the regulation change? To get the first floor? Oh, you're saying we're going to go all the.
Oh, no, for the, you're going to go, you're going to go all residential, so you have to go for the regulation change.
We need it, we need a regulation change, correct. Yep.
But it, I don't see it, Mr. Hegney. Am I wrong here? I know it's, it scared Nick because he remembers how long it took us to do 6127. Ever burned in my memory, but, and of course the landscape regulations. Do you see yourself submitting a horribly complicated regula, regulation? And can you get it?
My inclination is always to go with a simple regulation so that everyone understands it and that it applies easily. So, uh, I, I don't think we would have a problem bringing this back to you in September.
Um, if you.
Can't do it for August 1st, but.
Why would you not be able to submit what I would suggest to you if this isn't cheating, Patrick? Could he, he give you the wording of the regulation and you run it by Westcog now? So that in September, you've already got Westcog's opinion?
I think from a F O I standpoint, we need to have an application that everyone's aware of that Westcog is reviewing, that they're not reviewing stuff absent an application.
We've did, we did do some without an application.
Are you talking about staff authored ones?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we've all, because we've had public work sessions on those and everything. I don't think it's, it's unknown. This is going to be, you know, this will be submitted quietly and then, and then given to.
Oh, no, not at all. It would be, hey, Westcog, we're thinking of doing this. Give us an opinion. And then Westcog says, oh no, this is great or this stinks. And then we have a public hearing.
I, I think, I think if Mr. Hegney can submit the language sooner than later, we don't, uh, you know, if we can get the language and the application submitted and notified, I think that would be.
Can you do a pending? Can he just submit it and not have it on an agenda yet? Yes, right?
Oh, oh, good, that, I'm sorry. You asked him to go before you, before it goes to Westcog? I'm sorry. No, 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 absolutely.
I thought that's what you were saying and I was trying really hard to say, wow, when did we start doing that? Yeah.
Well, like, yeah, I can appreciate why that sounds very strict.
Okay, so yes, Mr. Hegney, get it in because Westcog requires 30 days and is grumpy when they don't get it.
No, I would look to file it by the end of this month.
Okay.
So that it would be eligible for a, a September meeting when we can come back and bring this to you all as one package. That would be my goal.
And I don't think, given Westcog's, um, Affordable Housing Plan and the housing plan in general and what they're saying, it's kind of sounds like Bob. So I don't think they're going to have an issue.
No.
Oh, and Bob is working with Westcog.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
Their issue is regional ones too, so they're, they're intermunicipal. So again, if it, if they don't see it as being an intermunicipal.
They're not going to have a problem with it. And they're looking, everybody's looking for us to do this. All right.
Question from Madam Chair. Do the current seated commissioners on this stay seated?
Yes, unless somebody.
Forward or, or do we get bounced when the?
No, no, it, it, no, normally we leave you seated. We try very hard to leave you seated. Every now and then somebody gets really passionate about an application and wants it back. But we try not to give them back because being seated is so important to how you think. It just makes a difference in your brain. I don't know why.
Thank you.
It just, because there's, there's a responsibility maybe? So we try, always try to leave the alternate seated.
It's also good, a good idea to have the alternates participating more than less.
Right. I was saying that sort of, yeah. We used to have an alternate that only showed up at a meeting if she was going to be seated.
That's one of the reasons. Wondering if that policy's still in.
All right, okay. So we're going to go eat dinner, guys, unless there's something else you need. We're going to continue this application and we'll see you when you come back.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, it is, oh, 7:31, 7:51. Yeah, you can make, guys made me wait too long.
Just go.
Uh, our next application is Greenwich Place L Cal LLC for a final site plan. And wait, do we have Peter Low? Peter Low, do we have you? Okay, for a final site plan and special permit to demolish and reconstruct the pool clubhouse, new bathroom building, adding 2582 square feet of gross floor area, et cetera, at zero Western Junior Highway. Seated on this application is Mary Jenkins, Arn Wells, Albin McCray and Low.
Evening, everyone. Uh, for the applicant, uh, my name is Christopher Bristol. Uh, just one point of clarification. This is actually an expansion of existing, um, existing clubhouse at Greenwich Place. We're not, we're not removing it. We're just.
So the notice is incorrect?
I, obviously, I was looking at the, the staff report, actually.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the agenda.
Oh.
And the agenda is usually what's in the notice.
Uh, I don't have the notice.
I don't think it really matters because you're still reconstructing.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would, I would tend to agree. But I mean, it's, I guess I just wanted to be clear so everyone was on the same page with it. Um, but.
Yeah, I just, I'm reading the agenda, not the staff report because the agenda is a public document.
Yes, understood. Um, so yes, the, the, um, the proposal is to slightly expand, uh, and, uh, upgrade, um, the, uh, Greenwich Place Clubhouse and the pool, uh, expand and relocate, uh, the pool and the pool area amenities, uh, and also do a lot of landscaping, uh, regrading, uh, a point of, um, uh, interest is that we're actually really improving the ADA access down to the, uh, down to the pool area. As you all know, there's, uh, there's a steep, uh, topography. There's a drop from, uh, the upper level down to where the, the pool is located. So it's actually, it's actually quite a complicated site. We have to relocate the sewer line, relocate the drainage lines because both of those are existing basically where the, where the, um, where the pool is. So in connection with all this, everything. where the, um, where the pool is. So in connection with all this, everything has to get sort of, uh, redone, um, and hats, you know, hats off to, um Tony DeAndrea, the project engineer, he's been working a lot, um, with the town, uh, age of departments, uh, before this, uh, which is actually why we're in such good shape, I think. Um, well, as the staff report indicates, we have a wetlands permit, DPW signed off, sewer is okay. Um. Uh, we have a, uh, we have obtained a, uh, variance for height, um, from planning on the Board of Appeals. We have ARC sign off, uh, completely. So, um, that really is it. We, we've addressed everything. Um, I think the only o- open question that may have been um, that I heard from yesterday's briefing session was the EMAC narrative. Um. I, the way, I mean, it was my counsel to the client, but the way I read the, um, uh, twenty-two, what is it, twenty-two D sub six? Um, excluded from the requirements of section, uh, section six fourteen A twenty-two is an increase in non-residential usable floor area as a result of enlargement of a building or conversion of accessory storage space or interior alteration. So if you look at six there, it seems to fall within the exceptions. So that's why I told my client that it wasn't necessary.
I agree.
Um, so that's, I mean, I'm happy to address any questions, otherwise I think, I think we're in pretty good shape with everything.
Commissioner, questions?
I have just a quick detail about confirming, confirming the green area thirty-five percent. I didn't have that anywhere. Did I just miss that?
Uh, well, I mean, we, we certainly have it. There's only a slight change over existing, so we can, we can provide that calculation or something similar. I mean, I didn't, um, have the engineer calculate a new green area for the entire site, so we just looked at the change of the existing, which we have. Um, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but the change is so small compared to the green area in the site that we certainly comply. We're happy to provide evidence of that when we go for a building permit.
Yeah, you just have, the staff report, as Mary just said, um, just says to be calculated. Application documents indicate a lot coverage of forty-six percent, and that's all you've given us, so we would need that.
Okay.
Um, because, yeah, you've, actually, you've got, given us neither the existing nor the future.
Well, okay, it's, 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 it should be there somewhere. I mean, I apologize for-
It should be, but, um it's, it's Marissa, and you know, she's very meticulous, so I don't think she would have missed it. I think she, she goes through things carefully. Okay, um. Landscaping, uh, people were satisfied, right? We discussed that yesterday. No, just a sec, I'm just, just checking with the commission. ARC had some comments originally, but those have been addressed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm kind of looking at Nick, but he doesn't know, I'm looking at him.
I'm sorry.
Yes, they've been addressed. They were, um there were some notes, uh, it was an electronic return, and then actually, uh, members of that looked at it and was approved, just submitted or approved at the time when they came back with stuff. It was actually just some things they needed to polish upon the building.
Now, actually, in response to conservation comments, I sent an email into staff yesterday, to Marissa yesterday. Right, we were, we agreed to swap out, um, some species for native, uh, plantings as well, so we, we're, we're happy to upgrade the, um, planting plan when we go to file a permit and show that-
So, we could make that, we could make that, we could note that in any decision we make.
Yeah, I just set forth the specific, um, the specific changes in an, in an email to staff, so you might want to reference that later, just for, you know, to make it easy.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah, uh, just following up on your, your email yesterday, Mr. Ristol, which was really helpful. You, you talked about dechlorinating the water when you're taking it down. Did you just put in a chemical to offset the chlorine? Is that as simple as that, or?
I gotta tell you, I, I'm, I'm not sure, actually. That's, I, I, I honestly don't know, because I, I, I wanted to clarify that point. I want to make sure it was dechlorinated, and Tony DeAndrea, um uh, said he had spoken with, uh, health department as well as engineering, and said that we were allowed to discharge the dechlorinated into, on the storm sewer, which we're doing. I don't know off the top of my head how that's dechlorinated.
So, um, Nick, I think on this, it's just to say that um, that backwash, exactly what health department said, that backwash, et cetera, um, and pool drainage, um, procedures have to comply with town health regulations. Because I've never heard of anybody dechlorinating their pool before emptying it. Um, I've certainly never done it, I have to tell you. So that was a new one to me. What does happen is chlorine evaporates and, and it dissipates. It gets used up. So if you just let it sit and don't replenish it for a while, like a couple of weeks, it stops being chlorinated. So.
Oh, yeah, Chair, sorry, I brought that.
Oh, yeah, Mr. DeAndrea, you and I know about pools. So, um, okay. So, so Arn, all you have to do is just let it sit, and eventually the chlorine dissipates, and then you can empty your pool. And that's what some people, that's what, that's what I do if I have to, if I have to get rid of my pool water. I wait till the chlorine level is down, because that's why you have to replenish the chlorine all the time. And you replenish it once a week, normally. Those of us who do their own pools, Mr. DeAndrea.
Correct.
Agreed. And who have pools.
Yeah, exactly. Those who have pools.
Well, come on, you've seen my dinky pool. I'm sure Mr. DeAndrea has a, a great facility, but anyway, we've talked about chlorine in the past. So we would just say he has, they have to comply with the discharge procedures for, um, the health department. Anything else from the commission? No. Any comment from the public regarding this application? This is, uh, zero Western Junior?
One hand, Madam.
One hand. Camille Fusco. Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, um, there you go. And then if you would unmute, oh, you are unmuted. You're all ready to go.
I'm really sorry, I'm not a Zoom expert, and I had to switch go through some things. I apologize for the delay, especially since y'all have been working so hard for so long. Thank you so much for this, for all the work that you do, and this opportunity to speak. So I've been a resident at Putnam Place for the last seven years, but I've been a town resident and a town employee for the last twenty-four years. So, I have three sort of areas of concern. A lot has been made of ADA compliance, which I am totally supportive of, except none of the apartments are ADA compliant. And so they all have stairs either to get in them or within the buildings themselves. So this would be a great thing for visitors, but it doesn't affect tenants, because they don't have access to their apartments. Um, I'm really concerned about traffic during construction. It's a one-way street at this point in the complex, a whole half of the complex. And there's a fire hydrant right there, that's a safety issue for those people on that side, not for me. I'm in building three. Um, but the last thing that I'm really concerned about is we've already seen huge rent increases. And I fear that we are going to see even more huge rent increases to pay for this project, and the commission talks all the time about workforce housing and affordable housing. I won't be able to afford to stay here. Other senior citizens in the complex won't be able to afford to stay here if we have huge rent increases. So I thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. And what was your last sentence? Uh, we entered the opportunity to speak?
Thank you.
Okay, so just to ask you, okay, so just to answer your, as you know, we can't do anything about rents, that's not in our-
Of, of course, uh, but-
So, I mean, I know, I know you're worried about it, but there's nothing we can do. And all we can do is somebody gives us a site plan that they're gonna make this swimming area better, and all we can do is say, yes, it works, or no, it doesn't, with our regulations. Um, but what we can do about your comments is we will add a, we will add a request that when they do the work, they show staff how they're gonna manage the truck traffic and the construction vehicles, and how they'll, they'll phase it and where they'll stage it, where they'll, where they'll keep how they're gonna do it, and where they're gonna keep the construction material. That we could do for you. Can't do anything for you on the rent, but best wishes to you.
I understand. I just wanted to, to say that I thought that that was an important component in
I know.
Affordable housing in town. This is one of the few places that exists. So, it would be nice if we could keep it affordable. Thank you.
Tell, we'll tell Mr. Baralec to build some more.
Oh, okay, terrific. Pets have to be allowed, but aside from that, it'd be great.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
All right, so we have for, um uh, we, so the, how the, how the vehicles, and I think we had raised it when we first heard this, is like how the construction traffic's gonna work, so we just need to ask, um that it work. Mr. LaRoe, what do you think? Do you look like?
Oh, I, I just, um I, I had one question. The, public, it's not public as in for everybody. There's not a daily fee, right, Mr. Bristol? It is only-
Yeah, no, correct, it's, it's for residents.
Okay, I, so just, it, it's a resident amenity, um, and there is no pool now, or the pool's been?
There, there is a pool now. It's, it's a, it's a small one. It's actually being expanded and slightly relocated in order, in order to, um fit with the pool, um, amenities there.
Thank you. I'm looking at the plans. Uh, this isn't a new, I just want to make sure that no one's under the impression that this is a new, completely new facility. It's, it's-
No, it's, it's-
No, no, we know that. But to Ms. Fusco's point, one of the things is, as I remember, you don't have to go ADA compliant unless you're doing work on the units themselves, right? Or you have a- or you have a tenant who applies and requires them.
There's that, and there's also, uh, significant, that's to be a certain amount of investment in the building to have to update the codes for the built, so so, I mean, it's a building, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a zoning regulatory thing, but you're absolutely right. There, there is uh, a resonant request of, uh, option, and then there's also the investment, um, you know, like substantial improvement for flood zones.
Gotcha.
So.
Okeydoke. Um, any, no other questions from the commission, right? Anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Hearing no application, no ob, no objection, this application is hereby closed. Mr. DeAndrea, we're sending you back to your swimming pool.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is Berkeley Insurance Company. This is item number six. On the, Berkeley Insurance Company for a final site plan and special permit. I'm gonna let the applicant, um, explain all that, because it's pursuant to a previous approval. Four seventy-five Steamboat Road. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and commission members. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is an application that is driven mainly by upgrades to mechanical systems as part of a renovation of the building that hasn't occurred for over twenty years. But includes a new generator in a room uh, under the, uh, building, a guardhouse, uh, for security, a sound enclosure uh, on the roof for the mechanical equipment, uh, and new lighting in the garage. There's some minor changes to the uh, a penthouse, uh, area that you approved, uh, two years ago. Uh, and, uh, also to the, uh, front, uh, entryway. Uh, we have received a wetland permit, uh, we've received a variance for the, uh, uh, guardhouse, uh, and ARC has reviewed it and given their blessing. Uh, the, the, the questions at the briefing yesterday really seemed to resolve, revolve rather, around the, uh, generator. And, uh, one of the big questions was fuel source. Uh, and this was something that was discussed as part of the all mechanical upgrades, uh, to the building. Uh, real concern was reliability of the fuel source. Uh, with, uh, diesel fuel, you can, uh, contract with a fuel supplier uh, rather than being at the mercy of Connecticut natural gas. Uh, I have to add that, uh, I did have, uh, a client during Sandy that, uh, had a generator, uh, near the water, uh, fueled by natural gas. And when, uh, they really needed the generator to work, uh, Connecticut natural gas cut it off. Uh, not that I think this building is threatened in the same way that that property was. Uh, but it is, uh, on the cove, uh, and there is concern about reliability of, of the fuel source, and, and that was, uh, a determination, uh, that was made, uh, as part of, uh, uh, developing the, the mechanical program. Uh, uh, th- this is the, uh, headquarters, uh, for Berkeley Insurance. Uh, they need to have power twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and this, it's extremely important to them, and that's, that's why they have gone in this direction. Uh, and are with, uh, diesel. Similarly to hospitals and other institutions uh, are, are generally using, uh, uh, diesel fuel. I would add that it runs, uh, once a month, uh, to, uh, ensure that it's operating properly for about fifteen between fifteen to thirty minutes, uh, uh, during that one day a month. Uh, and during, when it runs, uh, at any time, it would meet our nighttime decibel requirement. Uh, for sound level at the, uh, at the, uh, property line. Uh, uh, my client did hire, uh, Longman Lindsay, uh, as the acoustical consultant. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, we didn't get the report as, as early as we had hoped. Uh, it has been submitted to the file. Uh, it was shared with, uh, uh, one of our neighbors, Mr. Stillman, uh, who has expressed a good deal of concern about, uh, noise levels, because that has been an issue for him and the neighborhood in the past. Uh, uh, representatives of, uh, Berkeley Insurance did meet with him today, along with, uh, Steve Lindsay, uh, who authored, uh, the report, uh, which we shared with him and has been put on file. Uh, and, uh, he's available here, uh, in the audience if the commission would want a uh, summary, uh, of his findings, or, or we can wait for, uh, public comment and see if there's anything he needs to address at that point. Uh, but when you get right down to it, as I said, uh, this is really, uh, a mechanical upgrade uh, to the building, uh, which is driving this particular application.
Okay, so first, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wells. I mean, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, right. Uh, yeah, a couple of comments there. I think, uh, I think we really need to talk about, uh, the air quality in Greenwich. The fact that, uh, it's some of the worst in the country. Uh, certainly not helped by the diesel fuels from all the trucks that are going by. Uh, as, just want to reiterate, because I put it in the public record, a, uh, a memo from the, uh, Maryland Department of Transportation talking about the deleterious effects of diesel fuel emissions, one of which are the small particles which contribute to heart problems and also asthma. So there's a major health issue here in installing uh, it sounds like a very sizable, uh, diesel generator right in the middle of Greenwich that, okay, it's once a week, but when the, when the power's out, it could be going for uh, a week to two weeks, and you've got neighbors, uh, living in the area, so feel very strongly that a large diesel ener, uh, generator has no place uh, in Greenwich. And, uh, you already have a natural gas service there. You're gonna be firing your boilers on natural gas, so if you're concerned about, uh, interruption of service from natural gas, why are you using natural gas? Uh, and, you know, th- those are my major comments. You also have the Bruce Museum in the area. You have a lot of residences. And we've got very poor air quality in Fairfield County, and we don't need to make it any worse.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Hegney, the generator powers the whole building?
Yes.
Or just, just the systems? Okay. Um, does the muffler go up to the roof or just out the side of the, the wall?
Uh, I, I believe that is generated, it's up to the roof. Uh, if we could ask, uh, Kyle Feeny, who's also in attendance to uh, confirm that. Uh, he's, uh, an engineer that has been assisting as a consultant on the project.
Um. I think the, the other thing, to add to it, Mr. Wells said, the governor did pass, the Connecticut governor did pass the Clean Air um, bill last year. It was in the last legislative session. So Connecticut- bill last year. It was in the last legislative session. So Connecticut is heading in the same direction. We would really like your client to reconsider. We say this every time somebody comes in with a very large diesel generator. We're not sinking you out. We keep asking people to reconsider that pursuant to state law to where the governor is trying to take the state. I I'm sure, Mr. Hegney, you're familiar with the bill. And, you know, they're trying to get rid of a lot, you know, they're trying to change over the state fleet, et cetera. So it we ask people to think about it. We can't make you do it, obviously, but we sure ask you to reconsider it. Mr. Feeney, if you would go ahead.
Yes, the exhaust fluid does go up to the roof as the previous question asked. Also mentioned, we currently have a diesel generator on the first floor. And as this committee and maybe some of the other committees have seen throughout the past few months, we are hard pressed for space and a natural gas generator takes up more room compared to a diesel generator. And we don't have much room at all to spare on the ground floor.
Mr. Low, did you want to ask Mr. Feeney a question?
Well, I was going to support Mr. Wells and Mr. Feeney perhaps has answered part of my question, which was, is this a cost issue? Because as Mr. Wells points out, you've got it's right in the middle of town, as it were. You've got kids programs going into the Bruce Museum. You've got people during the summer months availing themselves in droves, taking those ferries out to the island and what, you know, why, why wouldn't you was my question? Why wouldn't you avoid using diesel? As I said, you've in part answered that, but is there another solution? Is this being driven by cost or you say space? Is there another way to accommodate a different fuel source?
So it is not being driven by cost. Natural gas generators have a higher upfront costs. But as I understand it, the cost of the fuel, you make that money back relatively quickly over the life of the machine. What was the other part of the question? Sorry, Mr. Low. Well, just why, why not natural gas? It really boils down to we want to control the fuel source and the availability of the emergency power. From our research and our discussions with our engineering team, most financial institutions, most business critical operations, data centers all rely on diesel generator backup. Many times they have redundant generators where they have multiple generators that can power the entire operation. So that was the main driving force in keeping the diesel generator we currently have today.
Okay, I'm I'm ignorant on the subject of of the diesel generators in particular. But my the part of my question was, is there another opportunity? You you use you mentioned space as being a constraint here. I'm underwhelmed by the argument that most other businesses do X, Y, and Z. This is a health issue. So I would ask you to address yourself to that. Is there another? Is there another option here? Given the articulated constraint with respect to space?
To my knowledge, and I want to caveat this because we have not extensively studied if we can fit a natural gas generator on the ground floor. But I would assume that we would then need a different variance to make that fit on the ground floor. And it is not something that the organization wants to proceed with. They would prefer a diesel generator. But I understand you and the committee's concerns on the fuel source.
Mr. Wells, did you want to add something?
I just had some follow up questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the the first question is if you went natural gas, you wouldn't need a huge diesel tank, which you've got in your plan. So if you eliminate the diesel tank, don't you have enough room for the for the natural gas generator?
Yep, there's potential there. Like I said, we we didn't really chase down a natural gas generator too much because the direction was to maintain the diesel fuel source. But yeah, you're right.
Okay. The the next question is, how many kilowatt watts do you need to, you know, drive your whole building? How many are you looking for?
1500 kilowatt generator.
1800?
15, 1500.
15, sorry. Okay. So certainly within the parameters of a natural gas, I think Caterpillar tractor can provide one up to 2500 kilowatts. Another question is, what EPA tier level are you proposing for your generator? In terms of emission controls?
I I don't have that readily available, but I can certainly get that information and send it to Tom to send to the committee here.
Okay, well, that's that's pretty critical because that speaks to, you know, how well you're controlling your emissions. And then the last question is, we have an outage. You've got a full fuel tank. How long will that fuel tank? How many days will that run your generator?
I believe the 3000 gallon fuel tank is 53 hours of continuous runtime at max power. Obviously, we wouldn't anticipate to have 100% load on the generator during a sustained outage. So that's those are kind of the hours that have been bounced around.
So basically, you know, a little over two days, and then we got another enormous fuel truck coming in, or maybe two fuel trucks. I don't know if they your fuel trucks hold 3000 gallons. They probably don't. So we've got, you know, diesel trucks bringing in diesel fuel onto the property during a flood situation. I'd be more nervous about that than I would about, you know, a natural gas interruption. But, you know, it's your call. And then lastly, I really strongly disagree with the supposition that, you know, most businesses are using diesel. I mean, Mass General, their backup generators are natural gas. Pretty sure Greenwich Hospital is. But anyway, when Greenwich Hospital was looking at their expansion, which they didn't go ahead with, they were going to have a a natural gas generator. So I think the the businesses and the hospitals, obviously the hospitals that, you know, are kind of with a program are are going with natural gas. Thank you. I yield the or back to the chair.
Actually, I think Mary had something to say. Your hand came down, but I thought I saw it up.
It was up, but then Arn asked about this space issue with the 3000 gallon tanks. So he asked my question for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Feeney? I think maybe you could explore this further with your company? With your client? Or Mr. Hegney? Either one of you?
Yeah, you know, this was a decision that was made by the the Berkley's. So the it was one where they are given the information. It's explained to them the pros and cons, and they have decided that they want to have a diesel generator. And then we would ask the commission to approve it as submitted.
Well, I think that we're we're looking at a special permit. And so as such, that it's fair game to talk about impact on a surrounding community from the use of of a of of the fuel tank of the of the diesel generator. So I think I think it falls under the fair game of asking for them to reconsider, given the fact that they do need the space for the tank and et cetera. Ms. Jenkins?
My hand went up again. I would just emphasize again that I think the community concern here should be primary to an insurance company. It's a major. It's a major building. It's oversized. They got an advantage in terms of the size of their building originally. And again, near parks, near water sources, near residences and near near playground. There's a playground right across the outlet there. So I would urge the your client to consider seriously the impact on the community and to make themselves a model of of clean backup energy in this case. I I I sound like Dr. Dr. Arn, but I'm learning at his at his model. So thank you.
Okay. I I don't recall if does anybody have anything further? We talked about the sound. Did you want to talk about the sound?
Of course, quick question for Mr. LaRoe. Do you remember if the generator at the Bruce, the Bruce Museum is diesel or gas?
I don't, but let me see if I can find that.
Okay, and there's what there's one that the former general rebuilding. I believe that one's diesel as well.
Mm hmm. Clean Air Act passed last year.
Right. Also, I would just say that actually the project site is, you know, close to 95. That particular matter, no matter what we do, we can't scrub that clean either. So
Yes, we can. And this is an interesting thing because we keep hearing that for different things. Well, you're right by 95, so it doesn't matter if you add a little more air pollution. I I'm I have trouble with that argument because I do think you got to start somewhere and there's no no reason to pile it on if you don't have to.
Right. I think the with a generator. I take that argument as if this was a continuous engine running with diesel fumes. I could understand that argument. This is going to be an intermittent exercise of 30 minutes, once a month, once a week, something like that. And it only used in an emergency situation. So what I find is that if I'm adding a lot of particular matters to to the atmosphere, it's going to be significantly less than what is dumped into the atmosphere every day by 95.
But Nick, any addition arguably is not a good thing. So even 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 a small amount intermittently. This problem is one that will be addressed over time by a series of small steps and cuts. And if we're in a position here and we and there's an option for a cleaner source, it seems to me that it behooves us not to just say, what, what the heck, you know, it's only a little incrementally. It's, you know, does it really matter? It all matters, arguably.
Okay, got that.
Okay, so Mr. Hegney, we're asking you to think about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think when we when the there was an upgrade to the emergency power plant at the Cosco train station, which provides emergency power, particularly during brownouts. When an additional turbine was added to the three that were there. That that was also running on diesel or or jet fuel. And and that's 150,000 gallon tank.
I just don't know why we're looking in the past and looking for past examples when we should be looking to the future.
Governor Lamont.
Clean Air Act and, you know, with constantly improving, requiring tougher emission standards, you know, in 20 years, I don't think there are going to be any diesel trucks on the road. They're going to be hydrogen or something else. So let's not look to the past. Let's look to the future. And if you're you're in a hole in terms of pollution, and we are in Greenwich, and you want to get out, then stop digging.
So, Mr. Hegney, we'd like you to consider that. I believe now on the question of the sound from the building, it seems that there's not a problem with that. From what I understand, you're not making really such significant changes to what was originally approved. Sorry, I just was going back to the staff report to see if we had any other outstanding.
Has the light issue been resolved?
Yes, the the lights in the garage level currently are unshielded and and not LED. All those fixtures are going to be replaced with LED fixtures. They will be shielded. The light source will be shielded. We did submit a photometric plan to the Architecture Review Committee that showed not point one but zero foot candles at the property line. I know that that had been a concern of the neighbors as well. And that that is being addressed with new lighting for the garage.
Now, just to go back, just to confirm what was in the one more issue that was in the correspondence. You are not using, they're not using that secondary entrance after all.
Well, we spent a lot of time on that a few years ago.
We did. And then we this is why we always concerned about enforcement. So we were supposed to get quarterly reports. I don't think we ever did. But apparently
Yes, no, the quarterly reports have been submitted. I'm not sure who received them. But
We couldn't find them.
I sent I sent some to staff yesterday. I found the rest of them in our records today, going back to 2019. The main time that the gate was open on to Davenport was in 2020, when there was a significant amount of work that the town was doing on Bruce, on a museum drive. And I I didn't go through all of them, but I don't think there were any other times that it was open. And as we said, when we presented that to the commission back some four, five years ago, it's only intended to be when absolutely necessary. And that's when it was opened. We would like to be able to retain that because it's obviously not been an issue for the neighborhood.
I gathered regarding conservation's comments. That they don't think that the about the Arborvitae and meeting the ZBA's screening condition?
I did speak with our landscape architect about that. It's his opinion that the Arborvitae are capable of being planted in that area. We had a revised plan which eliminated them because they didn't seem to function in any kind of significant screening, given their location. We're happy to either plant them or or not plant them, but we believe that they they can work in the area proposed by our landscape architect.
Mr. Hegney, the Arborvitae is actually behind behind
On the east side of the it's on the east side of the property. Yes.
East side.
East side. Toward the Indian Harbor Indian Harbor neighborhood.
Okay, I see the I see something in the south along Davenport Avenue, but I don't see anything in between the building and the water kind of thing.
The most recent one that we submitted did not include the Arborvitae.
Okay, so you need to update that. Now, the next question, I'm sorry.
If you want us to plant them, we'll plant them. If you don't want us to plant them, we won't plant them.
Um, so, Mr. Mackrak, you were going to say something else. I'm sorry.
So so the updated plan, I have something from June here. There would be more Arborvitae in the back of the building on the inlet side.
They were proposed on the inlet side. Yes.
So just to clarify, we had shown Arborvitae's on the east side of the property when the generator location was at the rear hide the generator. We've obviously since moved the generator. We've confirmed we can plant Arborvitae's if there's a screening reason for the lights or another reason, but that's why they're not currently on the landscape plan. The generator is not there anymore.
Okay, and we would rather you not have to screen the lights is to have them not be invasive.
Oh, yeah, but no, the light the lights are recessed actually up into the ceiling of the parking space. And they're relatively flat, so it, it conforms to our, our regulations for the light.
Alright. So, uh, this is coming back to so in essence, you don't need to do the Arbor Viti. You can if you, if we want you to, but you don't need to. The next question is when you do this, you end up reducing your parking by eight spaces. Right? Yes, eight spaces and you currently have variances for your parking. Right?
No, it's just, it's just non-conforming.
No, you're parking variances, parking variances were granted in sixty seven and two thousand to permit.
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, back then I was thinking of uh, recently. That's true.
Yeah. Okay, so you were, you've got, now, but the point in the staff report. And Madame Kulikowski, should I just let you talk? Tracy?
Um, hi. Um, I was just going to point out the, the Arbor Viti on the south side, the Davenport right away. That's actually a condition of the variance for the guardhouse. So that are, something needs to be planted along Davenport. That's a condition.
Okay, thank you, because that's what I was having trouble understanding. And I read your sentence and I listened to Mr. Higney and I'm like, I'm missing something here, but okay, it's only up to us. Okay, so you do have to park it, you do have to plant them because of the, so you have to show them on your landscape plan. The next question, Tracy.
And, and they are, those are shown on the landscape plan.
Those are shown, that's correct.
So, Ms. Kulikowski, so the other thing is, so they're increasing, and, and Mr. Higney, feel free to jump in, you're increasing your parking deficit, right? Or it's not a deficit because it's non, it's legally non-conforming?
Uh, the, yes, the, the parking on the site is legally non-conforming and the proposed project, the generator uh, reduces three spots from under the building for, to build the room for the generator. And then they are moving landscape islands so that you can get in and out around the guardhouse building properly. So you lose a net of five spaces there with the, they're putting three more in, but taking fi- uh, taking eight out. So it's a net loss of five.
And then in the fuel storage area, you're also losing three spaces.
Right, because it's five plus three.
So, might be another good reason to think about whether you could do something like, whether if you don't have the fuel storage tank, can you save any space, Mr. Feeny? That's a good, great question, Mr. Wells asked you. So you're legally non-conforming and really there, your variance reading what Ms. Kulikowski wrote, your variance, right Tracy, is just for the front yard parking.
The, the, the two variances were, that were granted in nineteen sixty seven and the second year, I can't remember right off.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Were to permit them to have, they have parking in the front yard setback on the steamboat side. Their parking lot goes, you know, right up to Steamboat Road or pretty close. So that was for that area. Um, the, you know, the building's been there since nineteen sixty nine. Um, so it is never, or not never, but it, it certainly has not recently complied with um, the parking standards is going at least as far back as two thousand one.
So.
So ma- madam chair, if I could
Yes, of course.
Interject some, some statistics. We have two hundred and twenty parking spaces. On typical day, we have a hundred and twenty five employees in the building.
Okay, so it says you have two hundred and thirty seven.
I think our most recent survey shows two twenty.
Hmm, okay, something else to check because it says you're going to two twenty nine.
I bel- I believe we do two thirty seven currently. Yep.
Yes, two thirty seven, that, that I checked. I, I found a prior uh, parking count and ch- double checked and triple checked that yet. I go from two thirty seven down to two twenty nine because they were required in two thousand one to go to two thirty seven.
Okay, and when they were required to go to two thirty seven in two thousand one, it was based on what? Do you know? Tracy?
They were increasing the floor area of the lobby.
Right.
Okay, so now we go to Mr. Higney saying, and, and again, if we go to Mr. Higney saying you have a hundred and twenty five employees.
At any, on a typical day, uh, and about fifteen to twenty guests on a typical day. The total employee count for the building is a hundred and seventy three. Uh, and although I haven't been there a lot, I have not witnessed a, an issue where it was anywhere near uh, capacity of use of the parking area.
So this is weird because we're getting two different, we're getting two different lines of argument. I'm having trouble reconciling. One is that you have um, ample space, probably overparked and ample space. And the other one is that you're tight for space from Mr. Feeny.
The space argument, well, I guess the overall, we're legally non-conforming with respect to site coverage, FAR and parking. So we need to rearrange the space on the ground floor to make room for the increased generator and the rearrangement of the ground floor. Parking specifically, we have.
But that's in your parking spaces. And so either you have too much parking or you don't have enough. It's, you, guess you're saying, I'm sorry, you're confused, you're confusing me because I feel like you're saying both things.
We, we have less parking than we had because of the reconfiguration of the parking lot and the addition of the generator and fuel room. But we have more parking than we need.
Which means you have more space. Tracy, help me out.
Right, they, where they are tight is on their FAR. And in order to um, put the guardhouse up and um, use, uh, use some of the FAR for the generator room, they had to take space out of the building. And they did an extensive FAR study to do that. And that was also one of the major concerns that you had when they came for the pre-app in the first place. Um, so what they are doing is uh, the parking is becoming more non-conforming. However, their FAR is becoming more conforming, al- albeit at a very small rate. But they are making the building slightly more conforming with FAR.
Gotcha.
But they, and ZBA gave them a, a variance for where the
Height.
Guardhouse.
Variance for the guardhouse, that's correct.
Yeah.
What were you asking about hardship before, Mr. Mackray?
Right.
Okay.
And, and if, I'm looking at the numbers and I guess two, three hundred sixty two is required. One for two hundred square feet. Being represented, there's two hundred thirty seven on site now. Being reduced to two hundred ninety nine, so that's.
Two twenty nine, two twen- no, two twenty nine.
Two twenty nine, a hundred and thirty three short.
Which they're saying that they don't need and, and we know we're in the middle of a big transition because we don't know what's going on with office space. I mean, we all know that, right? Uh, what's going to happen to work, you know, work from home?
Hmm, right. I would be, I would be careful with that. Um, in my opinion, to say, okay, well, I, I, you know, I have a site, you know, I'm twenty five short pay, I'm twenty five short. But I don't have all my people in every day.
Exactly.
And that's the next, next thing a person comes in and says the same thing. And this person comes in.
Yeah, exactly. So we are in transition right now. You really can't make a determination about what the future's going to look like at the moment. Because work from home is very, we don't know where it's going. Okay, um.
And we have, we have a little latitude though, don't we, in uh,
No, 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 we have latitude. Of course, yeah, we can wave. Now we've modified. Sorry, we can't waive our own regulations, sorry. Anything else? Questions or comments from the commission? Does uh, Mr. Higney, I'm going to ask for public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? This is Berkeley Insurance Company at four seventy five Steamboat Road. No hands from the public. Alrighty, um. I, I would, uh, wait, we did get one. The person's name is Dan. And Mr. Basili, I'll get. And Dan, if you would unmute and also if you would kindly identify yourself because this only says Dan. Tell us your, um, you, if you would tell us your first and last name.
Dan Levinson, and I'm, I live at eighty two Indian Harbor, which directly faces the Berkeley Building across Smith Cove. And um, we're actually rather pleased that this, a lot of the, the efforts they're undertaking will help with particularly sound abatement because we have, I mean, you, it's been pretty warm out the last couple of weeks. I would invite anyone to come on over and hear what it's, hear what it sounds like. And my wife and I recently walked through Bruce Playground, which is right to our right.
Yep.
And, and uh, it's noisy there too. Uh, and so changing the uh, the, the units on the roof and putting, more importantly, putting a sound baffle up is a big deal. And we're very pleased to support whatever they're doing. Whatever happens with the gas or the diesel generator, I hope you can proceed with the other uh, good ideas. The lighting also is a problem uh, at times. So uh, we support what you guys are doing and what they're doing and uh, hope it'll, it'll happen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levinson. I don't know about the noise difference between nat- natural gas and, and fuel. That's a question. Uh, maybe somebody else does. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is um, Hal Stillman. And followed by Mark Fox. And Mr. Stillman, if you would unmute, there you go.
Well, I had to get promoted first to a panelist.
You've been promoted today, so it's, you know, there you go.
Thank you. So I'm Hal Stillman and I live at eighty four Indian Harbor Drive. And I've been working with my neighbors at eighty, eighty two, eighty six and eighty eight since two thousand fifteen to implore the WR Berkeley company and its building and the town health department to reduce the noise emitted by the HVAC equipment located on the roof of the building. So the health department has confirmed that at times, just as background, the equipment produces noise at our properties that exceeds the noise ordinance. And we can certainly attest to that, even without any measurement. And unlike every other large building in town, these systems on the rooftop are not enclosed by a noise barrier. So we're really pleased that the current uh, renovation of the building will include new equipment and a noise barrier. And I've been promoting that idea since two thousand fifteen. And we support the application and want the building renovation to commence as soon as possible so that we get release, a relief from this excessive noise and annoying noise. So I'd like to commission to keep a few things in mind as well. It will be nearly impossible to actually measure the noise emissions from at the applicant's property line, once the new equipment is in place. And that's because these systems are on the roof about sixty feet above ground level. And there's no way to get a noise meter up there. So you could use a noise meter on a drone, but I think that's impractical and not going to happen. Therefore, the noise calculation and the predicted noise at their property line and at our residences is really important to us. And the final test will be if we continue to be disturbed by the noise. But that can only occur after the new equipment is operating and the noise barrier in place. So it's important to get this right from the beginning. That's why I spoke a lot with the acoustic engineer as well. So due to the criticality of these predictions and our properties, by the way, four hundred feet from the building, we're still exceeding the noise levels now. I've been in dialogue with the applicant, with the applicant's architectural and acoustic consultants. And I've reviewed Stephen Lindsay's uh, uh, noise analysis, acoustic analysis. He is the noise consultant. And I just have a few comments. Uh, first, the report did not include the latest layout of the rooftop equipment. Uh, and the extension of the noise barrier to enclose all the equipment and the revised plan for the generator location. That's because this is still in flux. And I have been advised by the applicant that I'll be receiving this information when it is available. Second, the noise calculation is not using the shortest distance to the property line. The last page has an aerial view of the building showing where the noise, where uh, Mr. Lindsay is um, predicting the noise that's at a hundred eight feet. And its actual value is closer to eighty feet. It's a minor difference, but maybe one or two dB and should be considered.
Good.
That would be to be an addition, additional, that they have to uh, uh, um, reduce it. And then, but the noise prediction has been performed uh, at the highest power mode of all the equipment. And that is really good. What's most important to me is that the noise calculation method that they applied, which is called simple distance dispersion, where the sound level decreases by six dB for every doubling of the distance, is now appropriate because there's a noise barrier. Previously, noise acoustic consultants to the WR Berkeley used that without a noise barrier in place and that was not right. So I'm glad that that's been corrected. In any event, we know uh, and are delighted that the noise situation will be better than what exists. And we're also pleased with the responsiveness that the applicants and the town has shown to date. And you guys have been tremendously supportive. So we support the renovation of the building technical systems. The HVAC, the lighting looks much better and an enclosed emergency generator. And we urge you to approve this so we can get on with it. As far as the natural gas generator, there's a cat number thirty five sixteen, which is a fast response, natural gas generator, one point five megawatts. That exists. They introduced it in January of uh, I think this year. So that is a possibility. And I agree with Dan that the noise and the particulates from the proposed diesel generator are just a minor issue compared to the other two items for the neighborhood. The noise emission and the lighting spilling over the sides of the building has been terrible.
I'm sorry.
So that's all I want to say. And I just.
Mr. Stillman, do you know if um, there, what the noise difference is between a, a, the gas generator you mentioned and what they're proposing?
It's unlikely to have any noise difference because these systems are typically sound baffled, both on the intake. And, and it, the intake and exit from the exhaust. So the exhaust system and the air intake for the radiator, they're typically heavily sound baffled and appropriate for use in buildings uh, that are in proximity to others. Uh, the exhaust is also goes through a muffler. There wouldn't generally be any significant difference in the sound, you know, but you know, the it, it, it might be. I really don't know the difference, but the engineers for WR Berkeley, I'm sure can look that up. And Caterpillar is just one of many manufacturers, not many, a few manufacturers that produce this kind of equipment. You know.
And, but the most important thing that you would like us to do is to make sure that the, the evaluation of the decibels at the property line is based on the shortest distance.
Right.
Okay.
That's it. And, and the calculation method that uh, um, the uh, Mr. Lindsay has used and hit the values that he's done, they are conservative. Which uh, delights me because he's not attributing all of the noise reduction that is possible to the sound barrier wall that will be in, in, installed. The only question, and he has taken into account multiple systems running and interference patterns in the noise, he's done a good job. The only thing that may be necessary would be to install sound absorbing panels against the the western and southern wall of the building within that enclosure. And that can be done afterwards if the noise proves to be excessive.
Okay.
Now, the other, there are two other things that I would like to see. One is that uh, aerial view, the plan view of the layout of equipment. But more importantly, a sectional view showing how the equipment heights conformed to the height of the noise barrier.
Ah, excellent. Okay, gotcha. Because that's what makes the difference.
That's what blocks noise. That's right.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that's what you should be asking for as well.
Yeah, I don't know as much about this as you evidently do. One more question. The height of the, of the noise barrier relatively, relative to the, to the generation of the noise. When the wave travels, it falls in a slightly different location on the other side. From what I remember when people have done the sound barriers on ninety five. The height of those walls just changes where the sound lands on the other side.
Right but this these barriers absorb ninety five percent of the sound of the sound pressure. The pressure wave that hits them.
Got it.
So so it's it's a really good solution for this. Sound will be emitted above the barrier. And then it will dissipate using this simple distance dispersion formula. Reducing its its perceived loudness with every doubling of the distance so you know. So if the if the noise barrier is fifty feet from the uh well I don't know the the property line is eighty feet from the building.
Uh huh.
Eighty feet further from that you will see it reduced by six dB.
Got it. Okay thank you and thank you for the um sound reduction one oh one that was really helpful. It's not what we do normally thank you sir. Uh our next speaker is Mark Fox. And Mr. Fox if you would unmute.
Yes. Yeah. You don't.
Mister yeah Mr. Fox you're all set. Hi um hi oh hello.
Hi I'm not Mark Fox Mark Fox is my husband my name is Patty Nusbaum. I have lived at eighty six Indian Harbor Drive directly across from the Berkeley Insurance Building. And um I have enjoyed my time here but I am really excited about this application and I urge you to approve it. I am most concerned about mitigating the noise especially from the generator and also the impact on the lighting on the neighborhood. I'm not an expert as my neighbor Hal Stillman is and I really appreciate all the work that he has put into it but he has kept kept me up to date all along the way. And again I urge you to um accept this application I think it's really important for our neighborhood thank you.
Thank you very much ma'am. Oh ma'am um just a second you said your name very fast and the court reporter needs is um needs you to say your first and last.
It's Patty P A T T E last name Nusbaum N U S B A U M at eighty six Indian Harbor Drive.
Great thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I gotta say I learned something interesting at every single P and Z meeting. You always learn um some new little tidbit. Uh okay Mr. Hegney you're in pretty good shape it sounds like you've got great support from the residents we did want you to think about the uh just to take one more quick look at that generator issue. Uh and if you would make those if you would ask Mr. Lindsay was his name?
Yes.
The sound dude.
Our acoustical consultant.
Uh yeah the guy I just called the sound dude. Um if you would ask the sound dude.
Sounds like a guy at a rock concert instead of our consultant.
I know it does uh it it sounds like one of those guys so if you would get those corrections made and Mr. Leroy did you wanna add something?
Yeah Mr. MacRae asked me some questions about neighboring generators um I'm I'm very confident that six hundred is is diesel. I am not positive and I've been looking at plans for the last twenty minutes on Bruce Museum that they have a gener- uh diesel generator or not it it there's no spec sheet that I
I think Mr. Wells said it I think it was Mr. Wells who said it perfectly um the Clean Air Act passed in twenty twenty two uh and we know where the governor's trying to go I believe that uh we try to support the governor's initiatives. And so I I think the look back is I I know Mr. Mac MacRae was asking great questions about existing practice but at the same time we need to be conscious of being consistent with the direction the state wants to move in.
Well ma'am chair once again you beat me to my punchline yeah so the the Bruce Museum plans are are you know two years old the
More.
Six hundred is well they've had revisions since but yes uh and the uh but six hundred it was you know ten years ago so
Yeah.
That uh yeah exactly.
And it's evolving and we know it's evolving um. Okay okay so you're gonna make those fixes uh you've it seems like the landscaping is fine and that the conservation comment was for a different plan. Um there was also the comment Mr. Hegney about the roof layout wasn't consistent with what is the final layout that didn't quite make sense to me. Uh but I'm sure Ms. Kulikowski is on that that the layout of the roof wasn't consistent with what's final.
I think I think the comment was on the acoustic report.
Okay.
Was using an earlier version.
Layout gotcha. Okay all right so you addressed those and uh we might have room on our August one agenda right? Maybe oh he just made the big wide eyed um deer in the headlights look so maybe not Mr. Hegney but
I I was hoping to have that discussion with Mr. Leroy Thursday morning.
Okay so actually here's what we're gonna do for you don't anybody get mad at me if we um we are going to have um we are going to end up having a special meeting we think for the Old Greenwich School and it's only gonna be one item. Um so that you don't get end up crosswise of our break because the neighbors are so interested in moving forward. What we could do is add you as a teensy weensy item on that agenda I mean that's gonna take we'll just have to decide when you do it before I think we would uh Mr. Leroy are you gonna shoot me?
The problem with that is this is a special permit and needs to be noticed and so if we had it shorter than uh sooner than if we have it next week it would have to be after the first is what I I guess I would have to say.
Um uh Madam Chair uh there is a meeting August first.
Right and Mr. Leroy wasn't sure he could accommodate you.
Well I would hope that this would not take up a great deal of time on the
So yeah so Mr. Leroy you know what we could do is we could put the lighting regs on with OG.
Um yes or we could put other pre apps on with OG.
Yeah yeah so we just so we're gonna have another meeting because we're got it we've got to do OG. We're gonna no we're not gonna leave them they don't want us to leave them in the lurch and right Mr. Low?
Correct.
Okay so Mr. Low is asking very pretty pleased that we have this meeting for them.
Keep in mind the the phrase heaven and earth.
Move heaven and earth is what we have said to them that we will do what we can and what we'll do since we have to work anyway is we'll add a couple of items to that meeting so that somehow they're because the neighbors really want us to move forward with this but we had open questions so that way we we do the best we can for everybody. All right okay.
Uh other than confirming the layout on the roof and providing that section the the only thing I
Correcting your sound test correcting your sound test so it's based on the shortest distance to the property line and not the longer not another one.
That that would be the study yes uh but it's really the generator and whether
Yes.
Gas generator is something that's acceptable to my client.
Yeah just ask them and I mean you know um it's something we're trying to get people to do. I'm figuring we're gonna see some some specific mandates from the state coming on all of this anyway very soon because of where the governor is headed so it's not a not a mistake to try to get ahead of this.
We we can certainly have that discussion.
Okay thank you sir.
But would very much want to be on that August first.
We'll we'll we won't necessarily move the heaven earth and earth that we will move for Mr. Low and his school.
For Old Greenwich School.
Oh for Old Greenwich School we won't move the heaven and earth that we would move for the Old Greenwich School well we will do our darnest to make sure that you don't have to go through all of August.
Thank you Madam Chair.
You're very welcome Mr. Hegney so this item is continued until further notice I suppose.
Well I think decided August first.
Or or August first.
All right we'll do our best. It's always possible that you know you guys work it out you two. All right thank you.
Very well thank you.
Um. And that folks Mr. Basili come say goodbye to us. Hey you did what?
Oh here I am.
And that concludes the public hearing.
Goodbye I'm I'll see you August first.
Yes bye bye.
All right have a good night bye bye.
Bye and good night.
Alrighty so folks we have one decision. We have Greenwich Place.
Yeah.
And then I'm here I'll just save us time right now. I hereby move approval of the minutes of January of the following minutes from twenty twenty two. I thought we had already done January fourth but I hereby move the approval of January fourth February first July nineteenth and August second of twenty twenty two do I have a second? Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Mr. MacRae how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye oddly enough.
And Albin is also aye. Okay and with that we go to Greenwich Place.
Uh zero Weston Junior Howie quote Greenwich Place PLPZ twenty twenty three two seventy final site plan applicant seeking approval to renovate and add to an existing clubhouse constructed detached pool house provide code blind accessibility. Relocate and expand swimming pools expand and reconfigure site amenities landscaping and stormwater management and a twenty two acre parcel located in the R six zone. Uh commission finds that as required the property came to the commission as a pre application at the four four public hearing under file PLPZ twenty twenty three zero six six. Uh on six twenty one twenty three the applicant received a variance of the building height by the zoning water appeals under application uh PLZ twenty twenty three zero one seven zoning issued comments uh dated seven eleven twenty three indicating proposal meets the BZR. Conservation is comments uh dated six twenty three twenty three noting concerns on the use of artificial turf. Uh sewer division issued uh comments on seven twelve twenty three indicate we're guessing the applicant submitted signed letter of acknowledgement. Uh engineering issue comments on seven thirteen twenty three indicating a pull for zoning building permit. Well there's issue permit number twenty twenty three zero eight on uh three twenty one twenty three. Um. And ARC issued minutes stated uh six twenty one twenty three requesting electronic return to review outstanding items. Therefore motion to approve the application noting the following priority zoning permit the applicant shall supply a construction phasing plan. Uh priority zoning permit the applicant shall provide a comprehensive green area calculation. Uh ARC electronics middle was reviewed by members of the commission and approved. Yeah we're gonna stated that per the conservation comments more native plantings will be added to the landscape plan. Uh the applicant able substitute the following native plants into the planning plan. Um a mammalus intermediate I've I burnum placatum and pears japonica. I got that right uh the final landscape plan um is to review by conservation and P and Z staff. Pre sewer division uh comment the applicant has submitted an email memo acknowledgement of the sewer conditions dated seven twelve twenty three. And per health recommendation any release of pool water should be dechlorinated prior to discharge uh into the onsite storming storm treatment system. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or environmental issues.
Did you mention the I didn't hear you say it that the staging the
Yes.
Okay I'm sorry alrighty do I have a second? Ding 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 ding. Okay then we got three people I heard Mary. I'm giving it to Mary. Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Mr. MacRae how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Albin is also ayeing with that the motion passes five nothing. Uh it's been a grand evening you guys.
Thanks for the memories Madam Chair.
Hey that was very interesting about the sound. It really was kinda cool.
Yeah.
I wish we had a good committee for that guy I mean he knows all this stuff right?
Yeah it what's interesting about the sound is that uh it's sound pressure that kinda stuff you can mitigate that. Uh but at a distance uh low frequency sound is actually still there because it's non directional.
Right.
So you may hear you may not hear the machine but you're gonna hear this kind of background hum. That's gonna drive you even more nuts because you can't figure out what it is and it's actually the low frequencies of the machines.
This is a musician speaking am I right?
Yes.
Yes it is.
I I think it was a I my was my guess it wasn't an architect speaking.
No no no.
Trying to figure out which Hattie.
Okay so here.
That's good news that's I'm you know.
Good example my acoustic bass. Basically it's just a very simple machine of actually generating air pressure at a low frequency. And it just goes everywhere you can't tell where it's really coming from because it's this low frequency and they're non directional. So it's kind of the strange hum there it is you actually feel more bass in your body because it's actually vibrating the the water and the liquids in your body as opposed to actually really physically hearing it.
I'm guessing your family knows where it's coming from if you're playing.
No my neighbors actually do. Get the knock on the door.
This this notion not knowing where it's coming from.
Was looking at Nick and going and the liquids vibrating in his body and that was just
Oh.
Oh yeah.
I was looking for a witty retort and Mr. Low had it so thank you.
All right.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.